To call to order the City Council meeting for December 16th, 2019, and I'd like you to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the roll.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Clistic.
Present.
Belzak.
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum that takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. And again, if you would like to make a comment tonight, and it's, you don't want to wait till the end of the meeting, or till halfway through the meeting, you have an opportunity now to make that comment. Please just state your name, and then make your comment. If none, we'll move to approval of our minutes for November 18th, 2019. Do you have somebody ready? Does somebody want to come forward?
There's a lot of commotion in the back, that's what's happening here.
We have our holiday people coming in maybe.
I thought Ann was gonna say something. This is the time, Ann, if you were gonna say something, I think.
If you want to say something now, yeah. That's fine.
I'll try to keep to three minutes. Hi, everybody. For those of you I haven't met yet, my name is Ann Murphy. I've been a practicing attorney for 15 years, out of Ohio, but eventually Chicago and Hinsdale, so I know the area. My business partner is Bea Tyke. She is a licensed private detective in the state of Illinois for quite a few years at this point. We are the family who are looking to operate out of Brookhaven Plaza to open a cannabis dispensary if and when we are licensed towards the end of 2019. I most importantly want to address and answer any questions anybody has. But in the meantime, I could at least start by just letting you get to know us, so that if it's a personal issue as to Brookhaven, I can address at least personalities. So you think, okay, I'm on the fence about Brookhaven, but if I know who's involved there, that might make me feel a little better. We are both very family oriented. This is a family-owned business, if it were to work out. My family owns two dispensaries out of state. Most of us with children that are young, all the way through probably age 30. We've been doing this for over five years. We are looking to open what would be a high-end boutique. This would not be something with wire racks on the wall. We want this to be a positive experience, almost like a jewelry store, or a nice store downtown. The outside would be very discreet. There's strict advertising rules, but even regardless of those ads, we're not looking to be flashy. We're obviously, we'd be happy to work with the city, and also the landlord, comporting with wishes to make as many people happy as possible. We are also firm believers that when you're granted blessings, it is our purpose in life to pass that forward. So Bea, who's been in part of this community for decades, is currently involved with the Darien Sports Plex. Her grandkids play sports there. She was a member of the Hinsdale South Booster Club, 2003 to 2009, making pasta dinners every Thursday for all 50 football players during football season. Girl softball, brought grills to the field every home game, and made dinners not just for team members, but for all families in attendance. And for two years, participated in the volleyball booster as well. Bea has also made cancer donations to $2,000 to the Phoenix Children's Hospital, where a friend of the families is currently treating. A Make-A-Wish Foundation, $500 last year. Oaklawn High School Music Department, $200. Another, I believe it was $500, to a local school to help with school lunches. I founded a Creedes Kids Foundation 10 years ago.
Three minutes.
Assisting, I'm sorry.
That's what she's calling, she's calling three minutes.
You're running out of time, yeah. Was that three minutes?
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? All right, then I ask for approval of our minutes for November 18th, 2019.
Wait, you got somebody coming up?
Oh, well, you could.
You in a hurry?
No.
Yeah.
I didn't see you, sir, I apologize.
Well, you gave us like five seconds between when she stopped and you're moving on to the next thing.
I'm very sorry.
My name is Edward Mack, and I live on Creekside Lane in Darien, and I'm totally opposed, not just to this idea of putting this thing in Brookhaven, but to the whole sub rosa way in which this thing was approved. You went through a litany of, well, we put it in an email, and then we had some meetings, and nobody showed up. Are you serious to think that you had a good communication strategy? You know, anybody with a wit of common sense knows this is a hot-button issue. So the fact that there was no feedback should tell you that people honestly didn't know about it. It wasn't that they didn't care, they didn't know about it. So therefore, everything that's transpired since then, I think is null and void. Yes, you went through all the right procedures, you went through all the right steps, you dotted the i's, crossed the t's, but you really had no community input. You said, an email went out, that's like an online poll. Everybody says, when the Drudge Report has a poll, that that's the right answer? Come on. All it would take is for someone to say, wow, this is interesting, maybe some high school kid, maybe send it out to 500 other high school kids, and say, everybody get back. You don't know where those responses came from. I think not only should we not approve this thing for Brookhaven, we should not approve it at all. What you should be doing is taking this to a referendum to the entire community.
Yes.
We have, we have an election coming up in 11 months. What's the rush? This has been illegal since time immemorial. Do we have to make a decision today? I don't think so. Put it to a referendum. How much would that cost? Couple hundred bucks to get the right ballots to the right people in the right precincts? Not very difficult to do. Let the people decide in a real election, with real registered voters, and see where it falls. If it comes out that 50% plus one are for it, knock your socks off. I'm wrong, the people have voted, but I think the reality is, this thing would be 75% no, 25% yes. So quit being in a rush, and slow it down. There is no need to do anything right now. Thank you.
I wanted to speak.
Now, I've been a resident of Darien for the last five years.
Just state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gina Wiggins. You probably recognize my name from my many emails, and I thank all of you that have answered me. I've been a resident for five years, but before that, I grew up here. I went to Lace, I went to Eisenhower, I went to Fairview. And I, this is not the Darien that I know. It has changed so much, and not for the good. My parents have been here 45 years. They had no clue that this vote was happening, and none of their neighbors knew either. So I would say that you do need to work on your communication. Sorry, I'm nervous. So I don't know if there's any way we can reverse this decision, but if we can't, I would urge you to be very stringent with your zoning requirements, because this was not a majority vote, it was, it was a split vote. And I guarantee you that if you heard from other people, a lot of other people, as you can see, that you would have had a lot more pushback if people had known. So I urge you to keep the 1,500-foot minimum distance between the dispensary and the churches and schools and everything else. Also, I wanted to question the hours. I noticed that they said that it could be open at 6:00 a.m. Everybody wants to compare this to the sale of alcohol, and I'm wondering, do we allow the sale of alcohol at 6:00 a.m. in this town? Okay, so I think that that's ridiculous. I'm in Ward 6, I don't want the dispensary anywhere near me, and I don't think it belongs in Brookhaven either. I think that there's gonna be traffic issues, I think there's gonna be parking issues. I think you need to think about all that. And then the other issue that I have is that there is no test for driving under the influence, and how are you gonna deal with that? Are there gonna be extra costs for police training? I just, I think all those need, all these questions need to be answered. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
My name is Sharon Podorowski. I'm a resident of Ward 3, and the lady before me said some of the questions that I also had on my mind, I never got an email. I don't oppose having the dispensary in Brookhaven Plaza. I don't think this is going to be an enhancement for the city of Darien. There are two schools close in the area. We're gonna create some other problems due to this type of business operation, because as has been seen in other towns, once you allow a dispensary for marijuana, that opens the door right behind it for recreational marijuana. You come in with a whole new set of problems. You'll create traffic problems, accidents, you'll have safety and security issues, which if they bring in their own independent security forces, they will not be looking out for the interest of the city of Darien. What they will be looking out for is the interest of their shop. So we need to look at these issues. We should not be jumping in on the bandwagon here, but taking a wait-and-see approach what's happening in other towns. Do we know, have we done our homework on what the revenue would be? In California, they found out that they had over, what was it, $12 billion revenue? Eight billion of that came from the black market, not from legal shops. And why was that? Because the black market undercut the legal shops. So we need to look at all these different issues. Look at data, do our homework, before we jump on the wagon to approve this. This needs to go to a referendum, because a lot of people in this town did not know about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, folks, I'm glad to be back again. My name's Jolene Libidas. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, licensed community professional counselor, licensed clinical professional counselor, and furthermore, a certified alcohol and drug counselor for the state of Illinois. As you folks saw me, most of you saw me last, in September, I was here, and I'm totally against having a dispensary, or any other form of advertisement whatsoever, for any marijuana dispensary, or drug paraphernalia in this city whatsoever. My main concern is addiction and criminal behavior, driving under the influence. And number two, you cannot test driving under the influence, because the marijuana stays in the body for 30 days, and you have to do a blood test. You can't do a pee test, you can't do a breath test, you can't look at somebody's eyes and say, oh yeah, they're under marijuana influence, when they could be under something else, and they could fight you that in court, couldn't they, Madam Attorney? They sure could. And so that's one reason alone, the legality and the problems that you're gonna cause, allowed to be caused, for accidents, and then secondly, addiction. Once it's more available, people can use it more, and become addicted to the product, or, like the other woman had said before me, there is gonna be a market underneath that's gonna undercut all prices. So is that gonna grow in this little town of Darien? Hinsdale voted against it, Downers Grove voted against it, Clarendon Hills voted against it, Woodbridge voted against it, West Chester, I believe, voted against it. So all the communities in Naperville's voted against it, Oakbrook's voted against it. So do we think there's a golden rainbow at the, under this pot? No, there's pot, and lots of dirty underground under the pot, and lots of potential problems for the health of our citizens, our coworkers, our friends, our family, either by an accident, by an addiction, by someone's malfeasance, by illegal activity. It's gonna happen. So I ask that you vote against having a dispensary in Darien, and I'm glad that the Darien, that areas that are unincorporated, are protected by the county. So the Darien areas that are unincorporated, which I used to live in one, they couldn't, there could not be any facilities like this in an unincorporated area. And also, the other members had mentioned, other people that came up had mentioned, most of us didn't know about this coming up. I only knew about it because I talk with Dan probably every year about things going on in our neighborhood. So I'm probably one of the few that would know about these meetings coming up. So thank you again, I ask you to vote against it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Abate, I've lived in Darien for 32 years, my husband and I, we raised two daughters here, they went to Hinsdale South. I could tell you why nobody knew about it. It wasn't in the local press. I'm an older person, most of the people in here are older people. It's wonderful that Darien put it in their connect, and they put it in there, and they did a survey, and online, and so on. I am a Darien Connect person, but I don't connect. I read the newspaper. It wasn't in the newspaper. I don't even know if we have a press person here today to report on the fact that there was a meeting coming up. And when it passed 4 to 3, it wasn't in the papers. Nobody knew about it. The only reason why there's people in this room tonight that know about it is because I found out it, about it a couple days ago, and I started talking, and I invited people, and some other people invited people. That's why they came tonight. They didn't come three or four months ago, because nobody knew about it. Darien Connect is nice, but that's not the source of how we get our information. It should be, but I don't read it. Shame on Kathy. I don't read, I'm gonna be honest, I don't read it. I read the local newspaper, and why wasn't it in the newspaper? I don't know. Is there a press person here to tell us why there isn't? Because people like me, and probably people in the room, would get their information from the paper, and if it was in the paper, I guarantee you, we would have had a room full four months ago, and this would not have passed. Thanks.
Kathy, there's no newspaper in Darien, you know that.
Okay, I get the Pioneer Press, and it's a local newspaper. It comes every Thursday, I read it from cover to cover, and I'm about to nix it, because it's, it gives all the local news in Darien, well, obviously not. So it, I read it all the time, and that's where I get my news. I don't go to the Darien Connect, I should, but I don't. But if it was in that paper, if it was in the local newspaper, and I know that's a dinosaur thing, but newspapers are dying, journalism is dead, I get all that, but that's how people find out things. At least people like my, of my age bracket. And it wasn't in there, I didn't see it, nobody talked about it, and, and so as a result, we're all shocked. We're all like, well, where was this survey? Well, I guess it was great, you did one, but no one knew about it. So, but I guarantee you, if it was in the paper, you would have had more of a turnout. Because 4,000 people out of 25,000 that live in this town, that's, that's a small percentage.
Actually, 4,000 households.
Okay, households. That's still a small percentage. Look at the room tonight. We just did this, and that's all. If we had done this earlier, we wouldn't have had this vote, my guess, just saying. Thanks.
Okay. We go to an approval of our minutes for November 18th, 2019. Need a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny. Seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Questions and comments? I know we didn't get a chance to talk about these during our work session. Any comments, or additions, or changes? If none, the roll.
Kenny.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Shower.
Epstein.
Six i's, one abstention.
All right, the minutes for November 18th are approved. It takes us to receiving, communications. Alderman Shower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, we've gotten a lot of phone calls on the cannabis situation. I'm just gonna mention three names right off the bat. Kevin Savage, Joe Miller, and Robert Chaps, including Gianna Wiggins, have contacted me all in, basically saying they do not want this in the city of Darien. They referenced a couple things, but the, you know, people have their different opinions, but one of the big things that says with these three people, it all has to do with family, pretty much. They don't want to see their families having this in the city of Darien. I'll bring this up a little bit more when we talk about this later on.
Anyone else? Alderman Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor. I received two communications, one from Sharon Podorowski, who's in the audience today, and Bob Chaps, who Alderman just mentioned, and Eileen Hayes, who are not in favor of the cannabis in Darien. They said it's not a good image for Darien, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman, Alderman?
I've received all the same communications as well, and I also received a communication from Lana Johnson, and Vito and Kathy Abate, who are also here tonight, very much opposed to cannabis. I've also had some verbal dialogues with residents, even as much as Friday night at the celebration, expressing their concern. Aside from cannabis, I did receive a communication from Amy Coletta, she's a resident right across from Cass Junior High, expressing her dismay that the snowplow service was doing its duty at 3:30 a.m., and she inquired about a noise ordinance, because it was quite loud and woke up her household. I've checked with Dan, and because it's an emergency snow removal situation, it doesn't fall within the noise ordinance, so I have said that it would be probably in her best interest to talk to Cass Junior High, and see if they can get that to be a little later in the evening hours, or morning hours.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Gustafson.
Yeah, I also received the same emails regarding the cannabis.
Alderman Kenny.
I'm trying to go down my list of who wasn't on any of these guys' lists. I got Ed Musial, Brendan Koch, K O C H, Bill Nolan, Tina Belkey, Janine Mormon. That's, that's my list. Oh, and Kathleen and Charles Nash.
Thank you. Alderman Clistic.
Thanks, Mayor. I received a communication from Mr. Tom Yarber, 600 block of Chipewall Lane, with regards to the recent break-ins to vehicles. He wants to see more patrols in the area, so it's one, one of the things the residents looking for in our block, so.
Anyone else? I received probably many of the same communications, Lana Johnson, Kathy, and Vito Abati. Jean sent me a number that I tried to respond to, I tried to respond to every one of them that I did receive. So I think we all pretty much saw the same group. Some of you had a few more than I did, but I did receive a bunch this weekend, so I thank you for that. That takes us to our mayor's report, and the first item under our mayor's report is recognition of our 2019 Holiday Home Decorating Contest winners. Could I have the committee come forward? Jerry, are you gonna present?
It's a team effort. Well, on a lighter note, again, myself, Jerry Legansky, Jim Kaiser, and Liz Hayes, along with Arletta, were part of the, what's Arletta's last name?
Pecknick.
Pecknick. Is it Polish? I should know that probably, right? And so we're here to present the winners. We had 15 homes that were nominated this year. I think the snow at Halloween, and that early snow, maybe set people back a little bit this year. We did have a couple blocks nominated. One block was the Easy Street Block, and the second block was the 7700 Block of Sawyer. And this year's winner for the block was the 7700 Block of Sawyer.
Yeah, Sherry couldn't make it tonight, so.
Yeah, I know, yeah, Sherry had a previous dinner engagement. She thought it was at 5:30, but it was actually at 6:30, and so she was not gonna be able to make it.
Are you the stand-in?
Yeah, I'm the stand-in.
Do we have it? Okay.
This is Steve, are you here for Sherry?
I am here for Sherry.
Okay.
It's a great block. I know, I know that Sherry and Steve do a really good job coordinating and helping people out, so it's a real community effort on their part. Okay, so we have four honorable mention winners, and the first honorable mention winner we have is a new, is a new person. They, this first time that they've, they've been recognized, and it's the 7706 Sawyer, the home of Jason and Jennifer Buckman, and that was Jennifer that was just here. You can stand up. The Buckmans have been Darien residents for five years. Jennifer is the architect, and starts around Thanksgiving. Jennifer has learned a lot since she blew out her fuse box and had to replace it two years ago, that she told me, which Jennifer, you're not the only one. People that do a lot of lighting, we learn the hard way. So she got a new fuse box courtesy of her husband, and that has not stopped her at all. She's, she's doing more and more every year. She started using LEDs two years ago. If you go up to the house, it's, it's lights from the front all the way up to the street. There are red candy canes along the driveway. The front lawn is adorned with a big cup of hot cocoa, and igloo with penguins fishing. There's a train and Santa sleighing reindeer. There are colored bulbs along the walkway, and a nativity scene as well, on the right side of their driveway. The trees and roof lines are all decorated with colored lights, and the mailbox is decorated as well. So thank you, Jennifer, for your beautiful display, and congratulations on winning, you know, the first time being recognized.
Thank you.
Okay, our second honorable mention also goes to another young family from Darien, and this is to Matthew and Rebecca Haruska. Are they here? No, maybe not? Hmm. Okay, well, Matt and Becky have a son, Matty, who's three years old, and the Haruska family lives at 621 Maple Lane, and they previously lived in Bowling Brook, began their award-winning holiday decorating about 10 years ago out in Bowling Brook. Their home on Maple Lane has roof lines outlined and lights, there's a rotating kaleidoscope of colors projected on the front of the household, and a decorated tree appears in the front window. Trees and landscaping are all lined with lights, the driveway's lined with candy canes, and a big sign asking Santa to please stop here sits prominently at the end of the driveway. There's a wreath in front of the house, there's other blow-up decorations, including a snowman, There's a wreath in front of the house, there's other blow-up decorations, including a snowman, Rudolph with his nose so bright, Santa and a gingerbread man. This is a great display done by, by, again, another one of our Darien young families, and I really look forward to seeing those families continue with this tradition for years to come, and thank them for their, for their display. I don't think they're here tonight, though. I'm not seeing them. So, be sure and stop by and, and see that.[623.04][623.04](APPLAUSE) Okay. Next honorable mention is on 3433 Brewer, home of Sean and Katie Bach. Are they here? Here we go. All right, come on up. They have Aubrey III and Jason, one-year-old, so they also are another one of our young families. They've, they've lived at this address on Brewer for three years, and even with their busy household, they've managed to put together a wonderful display of lights. And they've covered, completely covered, one of their tree trunks and major branches with blue and white lights, which I've never attempted this, but I've been told it's very The eaves on the house are outlined with lights, and every bush or tree in front of that house is covered with lights. I looked for one, and, she's waving at me.[674.12][674.12](LAUGHING) I looked for one that wasn't covered, and they were all lit. A lighted Merry Christmas appears by the front door, there's a big blow-up Santa there to greet you, and the display is just wonderfully, it's very artistically done with a good use of color. And, as I said, it is another young family here in Darien. I really look forward to seeing their holiday decorations continue in the future. So, thank you.[699.51][699.51](APPLAUSE)
Like Liz said, it's, it's really great to see a lot of young families that are, that are getting part of the tradition here. Our next honorable mention winner is a, a previous winner. It's the 7718 Sawyer, home of Sherry Gillespie. And I know Sherry's not here, she had a previous engagement that she said was going to conflict with tonight. The Gillespie family have been Darien residents for 37 years. Sherry is the decorator, and she starts before Thanksgiving. All decorations are real, from the tree displayed in their front window to the real evergreen swag with white lights that hang from the eaves. Their front light post is wrapped in evergreen swag, too. There are two redlit, two redlit candy canes, and a snowman that anchor the front of their home. There's a big wreath with white lights on the front as well. All the shrubs in front, and even along the sides, are decorated in green or red lights with the larger trees adorned in bright white lights. There's also a green Christmas tree along the driveway. No detail is left undone with the lights on their mailbox to the lighted ornament and Santa boots on the front porch. There are red, green, and white solar ornaments on their parkway tree, and firefly lights are scattered on their front lawn. Thank you, Sherry, again, for your beautiful display.[791.12][791.12](APPLAUSE) Okay. Our fifth place winner is a previous winner. Oh. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Jen. Our fifth place winner is a winner from a couple of years ago, and they're back again. It's the 508 Easy Street, which is the home of Gary and Linda Weaver, and I know they're The Weavers have lived at this address for 19 years. Their daughter Paige is an architect and, of this, and they have the, they have their display finished before Thanksgiving, so they can turn the display on the night of Thanksgiving. And the Friday after is still a tradition to decorate, I have to tell you, a magnificent 12-foot tree inside their house. It's, it's just breathtaking. The outside detail starts right from the decorated mailbox, and it just goes from there. Colored bulbs line the walkway, red and white lights line the roof, colored holly is above the front door, the front window and garage door. The garage door has a huge Santa Claus and sleigh mural and a lighted star above. There's two beautiful coach lights that greet you on the walkway, and there are two, like six-foot nutcrackers that, that guard the front door. And even their dog Scrappy is represented, too, by a little lit-up dog with presents below. There's a Snoopy on top of a mailbox, where Woodstop pops out of. They, Gary was telling me they had to cut down a couple of trees that they had where they used to decorate, but now without the trees, they had to come up with something, so they, they did. There's big, huge ornaments on the front lawn, and there's a snowman that adorned the front of their home. There's a colored wreath on the second floor as well, and through the front window, there are projections coming through. I've been doing this, I'm sure, seven or eight years already, and it's, it always amazes me how previous winners just keep upping up their game and adding more and more to their display. They definitely take a lot of pride in it. Okay, upward and onward. Our fourth place winner this year is the 8125 Sawyer, the home of Henry and Maria Hearth. I know they're here today. Henry and Maria have been Darien residents for 30 years. Henry is the architect for their display, and he starts way before Thanksgiving. There are white LED lights on every roof line and eve of their home with a star on top. One tree by their driveway has over 1,000 lights alone. Green and red candy canes and toy soldiers line their front lawn and driveway, along with a laser show on their garage door. Their new this year is a blue star above the garage door, which was from Henry's dad's display. Two reindeer pull a sleigh filled with presents, and there's a snowman as well. Their Christmas tree is displayed in their front window, and new this year are two tin soldiers on each side of the Christmas tree guarding it, and, and it's just beautiful. Henry told me that, you know, these decorators, like they say, they take so much pride in what they do. You know, on windy nights, they're out there making sure that things are blown over, and, and this year, Henry literally changed every light on one of his reindeer to make it, it's just, I mean, that's, that's taking a lot of pride in what you do. So, thank you, again, Henry and Maria, for your beautiful display.[1053.63][1053.63](APPLAUSE)
You know, everybody that we, as we drove around and looked at all the displays, some nominated, some not nominated, all of this, it's, it's amazing how much light it brings to the, to the city, to the community, as you go around, because, just wait until the middle of January, and it's going to be black as night out there from 4 o'clock on. So, it really is a boost when you see all these, these lights. So onward to third place this year is 809 Ball Air Drive, home of Rob and Annette Soracco. Are they here?
Yes.
There you go. Okay. All right.[1102.33][1102.33](APPLAUSE) They have two grown sons, Nick and Dylan. The Soraccos have been at this address, the 809 Ball Air address, for 10 years, having moved there from another house in Darien down the street. So, all total, they've been Darien residents since 1998. Yes, they moved down the street. I asked them if they carried their stuff down the street. Annette says Rob is always looking for a project. Rob has managed to create Whoville, right here in the middle of Darien. And by that, I mean, he didn't go out and buy Whoville, he made Whoville. He got the cutouts, he cut them out himself, he painted them by himself. It's, it's amazing. All the major characters and, and the accessories are there. The front yard is loaded with Whoville, including Cindy Lou Who. There's a Grinch on the sleigh, there's a Grinch that seems to be pulling the lights off the side of the house, and yet, there's a big red heart outline on the left side of the drive to remind us that the Grinch really does have a heart. Solar-powered lights illuminate the tree trunks in the parkway, and there's a great display, this is a great display to look at day or night. They've got all the floodlights properly positioned, very meticulously positioned, so you can look at this, this display day or night and, and see, see how detailed Whoville really is. They've also got some bright green lighted spheres that brighten up the whimsical scene. There's a lot of creativity in this display. Thank you, Rob and Annette, I appreciate it.[1192.41][1192.41](APPLAUSE) Okay. Thank you. Second place. All right. 7209 Richmond, home of Amy Colwell. Amy, I've seen, I've been talking to Amy now several years at this time of year. Amy's been in Darien since 2008, and I promised her I would try to describe how beautiful this holiday display was as best I could, and I'm really at a loss for words. I know I'm going to miss something. Amy has an extensive display inside and out at her home in Richmond. If you have small children, or even if you don't, please drive by this display at 7209 Richmond. The kids are going to ask you to stop, and they're going to want to get out, so just plan on that, too. Amy has lights on every bush, she's placed them very artistically to enhance her displays of reindeer, glass light and ornaments, a couple of new trees, a Santa's workshop blow-up, a snowman, a huge bear that gives hugs, a nativity set, angels, snowmen, and even an inflatable RV for Santa.[1271.65][1271.65](LAUGHING) The yard is lined with rotating chaser lights. There's very bright white lights that are adorning the shrubs. There's a welcome and Merry Christmas banners adorning the front side, door side lights, and snowman faces cover the coach lights on the garage. Amy says she's, putting all this together takes her about 30 hours, and she uses over 50 extension cords. Thank you, Amy, for sharing this absolutely fantastic display.[1301.15][1301.15](APPLAUSE) All right. Yep, Jim's up. Okay. You got your work.
The one, the one thing she didn't mention was that her folding-armed teddy bear is fur-covered.[1323.53][1323.53](LAUGHING)
Yeah, I need to keep him closer, because I know all the kids want to go in. They're going to cover all the cords.
So, good evening, everybody. Before we do first place, I'd like to thank Mayor Joe and the council for letting us be your Holiday Decorating Committee. Our team included, like Jerry mentioned, is Liz Hayes behind me on the right, Arletta, who could not make it tonight, her husband has some medical conditions, and then myself. Each year, we receive nominations from the residents of Darien, and we go out and determine who is the best. This is a special year, because the city of Darien is celebrating its 50th anniversary, and this is the 25th anniversary of the Holiday Decorating Contest. We've mentioned a lot of people tonight. We also take pictures of their homes, and we have a board behind us once we are done to, to have on display, it'll be upstairs in City Hall, and then also go out through Darien Connect. So, everybody will get to see who, who and what the homes look like, and it's a, it's a great thing to be part of.
Drum roll, please.
So, first place this year goes to the home of Dan and Ann McGinley. Are they here? There you go. All right. First place, 1905 Center Circle. Dan and Ann have been at this address for 25 years. They've got two sons, ages 12 and 16, and Dan is one of five brothers who grew up in this area, and, and he's been decorating for many years, along with his dad, Lou McGinley, who was one of our early Darien residents, and I believe had official...
City treasurer.
Yeah, city treasurer. The McGinley display is extensive. They have Santa projected in one of the bedroom windows, and the Grinch in another upstairs bedroom. The first time I saw this, I actually thought, oh my God, there's somebody in their house.[1443.13][1443.13](LAUGHING) Yeah, and then I went, oh, okay. There's a giant snowman and a Santa on the front lawn, which, the windy night we were there, Dan actually came out of the house and had to pump him back up because he was getting pulled out by the wind. A Merry Christmas sign appears near the front of the driveway. The house is outlined with lights both in front and in the backyard. The backyard has giant lighted snowflakes on it. There's a lighted Ho, Ho, Ho on one of the tree trunks. A projector provides an ever-changing picture on the, on the outside of the house. There's multiple blow-up, or, blow-up decorations across the front yard. The fence on the side of the house is a white fence, and it's illuminated with a multicolored, kind of moving waterfall effect. And, once again, please, everybody should drive by this. Words can't describe the beauty of this extensive display. Thank you for your efforts and for the joy you bring our community, and, now to you.
And then, so there are times when residents continue to outdo themselves. This year, we have such a resident. We'd like to recognize this resident with a lifetime honorary award. Dan and Ann McGinley of 1905 Center have, for the fifth year, placed in the top five, today receiving first place for the second time. The McGinley family is joining an elite group of Darien Christmas lights and decorations displayers. So, Dan and Ann, come on up and get your recognition.[1538.15][1538.15](APPLAUSE)
Can't wait to see it.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Just let, just to let everybody know, Dan's father was treasurer for the city of Darien for a number of years, and he's honorary citizen of the year. His picture is out in the lobby, out there with Gert Quaid, our other honorary citizen of the year, and thank you very much, Dan, for all your hard work. By the way, just so I can mention, and I know if you were going to do this, Jerry, and I apologize, but this Wednesday, there are two tours of all these homes. One at 6:00 p.m., one at 8:00 p.m. They take off from here in the parking lot of City Hall. You actually would meet in the police department, where you can pick up a goodie bag prior to getting on the bus. Again, there's a 6:00 p.m. and an 8:00 p.m. And as far as the aldermen are concerned, I, we need someone to do one of those tours. Alderman Gustafson, I think...
RDM doing one.
Is going to do one. We need someone to do the, I believe, the 8:00 p.m. tour. Right now, there's 40 people signed up. If you would like to attend Wednesday night, you need to call City Hall tomorrow, speak to Diane Novarini, and she'll put your name on the list, and if we get another 20 or so, we'll have to get another bus, but just to let you know. That's what you do. Since I have a captive audience, and we have no newspaper, I want you to know, that's what's going to happen Wednesday night. Okay? Did you guys want to finish up with something?
Well, I think typically, all the winners come up, and we have a picture taken with, with you, Mayor, and show the, the lights.
We have our display board for... All the winners can come up and have your picture taken.[1673.36][1673.36](LAUGHING)
One, two, three.
Moving in?
One, two, three. One time. Awesome. Congratulations.[1725.51][1725.51](LAUGHING)
Splits, yeah.
Everybody take a chance.
If you notice on the agenda tonight, we had, it lists the Hinsdale South presentation. I had an opportunity to visit Hinsdale I had an opportunity to visit Hinsdale South and tour the building with Superintendent Tammy Prentice and Principal Arwin Pecorni Lip a couple of weeks ago. Got a chance to see all the classes, not all the classes, but selected classes, and had a chance to sit with the principal's advisory committee, and I was so impressed by the children of Hinsdale South High School and what they had to say that day about why they loved their school, that I invited three of them to come to City Council, and they were supposed to come tonight, but because about the length of our council meeting tonight, I asked that we do that sometime in January. So, if you were expecting to hear that tonight, I apologize. But I, since I do have you here tonight, the census twenty twenty is coming up next year, and the city of Darien is making plans for that. And again, we realize the need for communication. When we went to this workshop several weeks ago at College of DuPage, one of the things that was emphasized was making people aware of the census, and I gave the aldermen some materials tonight. The Illinois Municipal League puts out a, a lot of material, which the aldermen will also get. This March, you will receive an invitation to participate in the census by online participation. That means by April first, they will ask that you go online and you complete your census. In the city of Darien, our concern are the senior citizens who may not have access to the Internet, those in nursing facilities, and we are forming what's called a Complete Count Committee, which is going to be run through our Economic Development Committee. We're also doing this in conjunction with Willowbrook. Mayor Trilla will submit the names of four people, and we will have the names of four people that will work as a committee. And why have a committee? Well, let's be quite honest. There are residents who feel more comfortable with their faith-based community, with their pastor, with their church. There are people feeling more comfortable with their principal or their teachers of their schools, and there are people who go to the library every day and are more comfortable doing something at the library. So, we need to reach out to our faith-based community. We need to reach out to our schools. We need to reach out to our business people. We need to reach out to our civic groups such as the Lions Club, the Women's Club, the Rotary. We're going to need the help of every one of these organizations to be able to get out to people the message that this census counts. Now, let me tell you about the importance of this. For every resident that is counted, the state of Illinois gets fifteen hundred dollars. If Darien under reports by five hundred people, that's a loss of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the city doesn't get, that doesn't come back, and the populations that are affected the most are schools. Title One, Medicaid, all these programs, transportation programs are all impacted, and as many of you know, a lot of people are leaving Illinois, so it is critical that we get a correct count. This is not a situation where we want to go into homes and we want to say, are you legal or illegal? We want to know the number of residents that exist in each of these houses. And our city planner, Joe, has already looked at data from 2010. We have eight tracks within the city of Darien that get measured. Back in 2010, one track had seventy-six percent performing. The other seven tracks were all in the eighties, eighty-six, eighty-seven percent. So, we're pretty good about getting people to respond to the census. Now, some people will also get, in addition to the letter, they'll get a paper form because some don't have access, and the Census Bureau has an idea of how they're going to get that information out to those people and who they are. Nursing homes, where people are unrelated to one another, that information will go out to the nursing home, and the nursing home director will have to complete that information. If you have a child in college, they want the information reported as their college location. So, and a lot of college students are not going to respond to the census, and some of us have, well, not me anymore, but some people still have children in college. So, there's an awareness, there's a need to make people aware, especially senior citizens, especially those who are under-reported or have a tendency to under-report. So, we're going to be advertising on our Direct Connect, and I do hope you, you do read it, and if you don't get it, I hope you sign up for it, because we're going to be listing and asking for people who want to work the census, not for us, but for the United States Census Bureau, where they'll be paid, because the very last element involves census takers going to homes of people who have not responded, knocking on their door, and asking them the key questions that they need to ask. And again, a lot of people are hesitant to be, to give the government their information. They, the, the census does require people to put their social security in there. When we met with the people from the United States Census Bureau at that workshop, they told us that the woman who, who presented said she has six different passwords that she needs to issue, one after the other, before she even gets into her file. That's how protected the data is. So, since I have all of you here tonight, I want you to know that this is coming up. Darien is forming a Complete Count Committee. Again, it's going to be run through our Economic Development Committee. We're going to be dealing with businesses, faith-based group, even looking at putting a terminal possibly at the library, a terminal here at City Hall, maybe a terminal over at the, the police department. I've worked with the school already with Hinsdale South. They're going to be putting out information because they have email addresses of all their residents, of all their students, parents. So, again, we're going to be looking for help, but since you're all here tonight, I want all of you to be aware that this is critically important, not just for the state of Illinois, but for, for Darien and DuPage County. DuPage County sends a lot of money to the state and doesn't get a lot of it back. The state of Illinois, for every dollar the state of Illinois sends to the federal government, the state of Illinois only gets seventy-two cents back, and there are states that get more than that. So, it's critical that we get back everything that we have coming to us. So, I wanted to make that announcement tonight. I'm going to be updating the council every two weeks at a city council meeting as to our status for the census twenty twenty, but you're all here tonight. Please read the Direct Connect. You'll see more information on the Direct Connect, and I know I've taken up some time saying that, but I think it's critical, and since I have an audience tonight, I wanted you to hear that. Now, I have something else to add, and some people may not like this, and some may, but I'm going to mention it anyway. Several weeks ago, we had a Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, and we had a topic come up at that Planning and Zoning Committee, and we had people who came in who were opposed to what that petitioner wanted to offer, and I have no problem with that, nor does the city have any problem with somebody specifying that they're against a proposal. But I have to say that the way the petitioner was treated by the people in the audience that night was despicable. Now, I'm very proud of our city, but that night I was embarrassed because no petitioner, that petitioner or any petitioner does not deserve to be treated the way those people were treated, where there were calls from the audience, people booing, people getting to the microphone and denigrating these people simply because they were putting in a petition to build something on their property. Petitioners have a right to submit a plan to increase their business. If people don't like it, they have a right to come forward and speak out to it, just as you are here tonight, possibly to speak for or against our zoning ordinance, but I ask that people act with a certain sense of decorum. I was embarrassed for the petitioners that night, and this seems to be something lately that we're seeing a lot, that when people come in, they feel, they feel they could denigrate the individual, they can go on social media and tear those people down. There were people even questioned their parenting skills that night, the petitioners, and I was ashamed that people even brought that up. So, I know some people may not like me saying this, but what I, I'm saying this because it's critical to me that if you come forward to say that you don't agree with something, you do some, you do it in a respectful manner, respectful of the petitioner, and that's all, and then that's how I'll end it, because I think that needed to be said, and if I offended anybody, I apologize, but I, I needed to say that. With that, we go to the city clerks' report.
I have a couple of items, Mr. Mayor. The Darien city offices will be closed on the following days: Tuesday, December the twenty-fourth, Wednesday, December twenty-fifth, and Wednesday, January first, in honor of the holidays.
Thank you. City administrators' report?
No report, Mayor.
It takes us to Department head information and questions, Police Department monthly report. Chief Thomas?
Yeah, I've got a few things I'll discuss. In the monthly report, obviously, we had a home invasion at, in November that was frustrating and scary to a lot of people, and I think a lot of people want, rightfully want to have a lot of answers and, and not feel any kind of fear from the situation. Unfortunately, there's rules that I have to obey regarding release of information, both because of prosecution and because of the integrity of the investigation. So, the information that's been released to the public is the information that's been released to the public and that will be released to the public. In the future, when hopefully the case is resolved through an arrest or however it gets resolved, that information will also be discussed, but it'll be discussed at an appropriate time, not during the middle of the investigation. So, my apologies for that. You know, as much as we like to be transparent, can't talk about evidence that's being processed and having offenders know what the, the status of that investigation is, and going from there. Another thing, item that was in the monthly report, that some people may not have seen, but some aldermen did because they contacted me regarding it, and that's the increase in residential burglaries. There was ten in November and three so far this month, and that's a significant spike in residential burglary, well, it's burglaries. Many of them are residential burglaries, and so it's either residential commercial or residential burglary or commercial burglary, and that's an increase. That's significant and troubling. A lot of times, you hear me talk, and some of you also echo it, and that's appreciated about locking your car. About ninety percent or better of vehicle burglaries are unlocked. These residential burglaries typically are locked, and I think, in fact, I think all of them were, the bill, residence was locked. Now, some of them, I think, two, maybe three of them were ruse burglaries, where they're talking about, you need your roof fixed, you need your driveway fixed, you need whatever done, and they try to get somebody out of the house or do a position where somebody, their partner can go into the house and commit the burglary. So, be cautious of those and keep your doors locked, and some of them are where they're just forcing in the door or window or some other entry point. Looking at the burglaries and your time to do all kinds of different pattern analysis, day of the week, time of day, location, MO, all these different types of things, and it's very hard to, at this time, to come up with a, a significant pattern to talk about this area, that area, this time of day, that time, day of the week. So, just be, the comment is just be cautious and continue to lock your door, leave the lights on and the, and the like that we would normally do for keeping those down. Not that there's any satisfaction, but all of our surrounding neighborhoods are also being targeted as well. So, there's probably, I don't remember, four or five months ago, we met and we talked about moving from an organization called Fiat, film the Investigation Assistance Team, to Merit, and so there's a, a group of detectives that are in Merit, and they too have been assigned to looking at this increase in residential burglaries to try to get a handle on that much better than where we're at now. Very little, we do have evidence from some scenes, and it is very tough to deal with the state with regards to evidence, and I'll give you an example that occurred today. Trying to look for the date. I think the, the incident occurred in July. I don't remember the date, July fifth or somewhere around there, and just today, whatever, five months later, we got the information back from the state regarding the, the evidence that was processed, and it was a fingerprint. So, it takes a long time to get that evidence processed, which is very frustrating because in order to solve those crimes and deal with those crimes, you want that information back significantly sooner than five months. Actually, five months is an improvement because it used to be eight to twelve months for evidence returns from the, the state that were looking at fingerprint evidence and the like. DNA evidence is even longer. So, so that's the downside. I would point you to page four, and we talked about this, I think, last time, and, you know, sometimes you just see the numbers, it's hard to tell, but we put the graph together the last time, and talks about where that crime is. So, went back ten years, and so you see each one of those ten years, January through November, where we were, and in the last four or five years, four years, it's been trending down, and we're significantly lower on overall crime in this year compared to all past years. So, that's, that's a good thing. You are living in a safer environment, but again, the, the issues of late, especially when it occurs, when you have such low crime and a situation occurs, it appears that it's much more problematic than what it is, but it's, it's my report.
Any questions for the chief?
Oliver Kenny?
Question, chief?
Yes, sir.
You've got a graph for traffic complaints. I, I've received the complaints up on Seventy-first Street, and I think that's probably fifteen hundred block, and I see the amount of time spent on that was in about an hour and a half. No, nine hours of monitoring, but yet Sixty-seventh and, eight hundred block, Sixty-seventh Street is showing, indicating it had about ninety-nine hours of, you know, monitoring. Can you, you know, help me figure out that gap?
Sure. There's any kind of number of things that will allow that to occur. If you look at that graph, I think that's when we first started putting those things together and tracking those through a software that we have called Frontline, and so those, those two weeks period, it depends on the time of day. So, if you have a situation that occurs at three o'clock in the afternoon and there's more people working the afternoons in the day shift, you're going to have more opportunities to, to sit there. Same thing day of the week. You know, you have a situation on Friday, Saturday, where the officers are running more times to different calls for service, then that's going to be issued. You could have an issue with, that we're talking about now, with the residential burglaries, where we're putting the officers in the residential streets, and so they're not taking the time to do some of those enforcement-type activities. I have no idea when those calls for service from, that people are going to call nine-one-one and we have to respond to. So, those officers are going to have to be proactive in the timeframe that they can be proactive. So, it's going to alter and fluctuate all kinds of different ways.
Oh, yeah. It just seems like, it seems like, it seems like, I mean, if it was, if it was like, you know, five hours or, you know, over, of course, time, but this, this is, you know, ninety-hour difference was, I thought was significant, and that's why I needed to ask the question.
Yeah, and it's a valid question. I'm saying it's not. I'm just telling you why there's going to be differentiation between the two, and you can see on that same report that we've been at different places for multiple hours with zero enforcement actions because there just wasn't anything happening, and we talked about that before, too, is make sure that when you're calling and making that complaint, that you don't say it occurs all the time, every day, because we're going to pick a time and date to go up there, and then there's, if nothing's going to happen, then you're going to be frustrated because nothing happens. So, some are very specific. There's one by the school, and, and right at three o'clock. So, we go up there half an hour before, half an hour after, and I think that one is one that we do a violation like every half hour or something. They're, they're making a stop and getting people to slow down or whatever the case may be. Others that, we're there for a number of ti, number of hours and there's nothing happening, so.
So, some of the online newspapers and stuff have been talking about Downers Grove. Downers Grove has got their rash of, you know, carjackings and burglaries and stuff. Have you seen any, do you track what goes on in the surrounding, you know, communities with? with the region Downers? I mean, for their 10-year crime, are you able to look at that too compared to what we're doing?
Only, I don't, but the only way to do that is if they publicize it the same way we do. And we publicize it in the monthly report, and then we do an annual report, and so that information's in there. I've never looked to see if those, that those data points are in there for those other, those other agencies.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Mayor, one comment, Chief. I was on the social media app next door, and a person wrote a couple paragraphs how somebody was at their house, they were in orange vests, they parked, they asked if they could park a car in her driveway, they were with the Sewer Department, I believe, something that didn't sound right. And there's still a hesitancy to call 911 by people. So, I guess this is, again, the commercial, when something's not right, doesn't seem right, doesn't look right. You're not bothering the police.
Absolutely not.
Call 911.
I was talking to Rich Study, you know, last week, and he was telling a story about somebody heard like leaves rattling around like 2:00 in the morning, and they didn't call until, until noon, saying, hey, you know, it's 2:00 in the morning, I heard something. And they're like, it does no good for you to call us 10 hours after you'd heard that. So.
Yeah. Shortly after I started here, so it's going back about four years, but a neighbor saw an unusual occurrence at the house next door, and there was a van parked in the driveway, and it was unfamiliar, and people were carrying stuff out into the van, and they thought that odd. So, instead of calling the police, calling 911, they just took a picture of the van. And it was a burglary, but because they took a picture of the van and had the license plate, they didn't take the side picture of the car, we were able to solve that, that crime. But call, it's not a bother to make that, make that happen. And going way back, back in the 1980s, I was still working a beat in Aurora, and my mom had saw somebody break into a neighbor's house, and she calls the non-emergency number. I'm calling an emergency number, that's what, I don't want to bother anybody. It's not a bother. Dial 911, get the police out there, we'll figure out whether or not it's an actual crime or a situation that they're, they're supposed to be there.
I guess the thing I would mention, if any of you have outside cameras, a lot of people have ring doorbells that know, where they'll pick up somebody who comes to your house. I have a camera on my, outside of my house, and I live on a corner, and everybody comes in my subdivision, in or out, that camera picks that up. So, if somebody goes down by Ed Mack's house down there and somebody said, there's a break-in and it's a white van, I've got a five-day look back, and I, my camera has that, and we could take a look, you know, and I'm registered with the Darien Police. So, if you have an outdoor camera that's picking up things in your neighborhood and you register with the Darien Police, that does help, because then they know who to call just in case somebody has video.
It has helped. We had a situation probably two, three months ago where a camera picked up a situation, but it was poor quality camera and it was facing the wrong direction. So, you're getting a side view versus the tail view where we get a license plate and those type of things. But another person had the camera properly set up, and we got good video of the situation that had occurred. Now, it was 2:00 in the morning, and it was too dark to make a, an ID capable of, you know, a court identification, but it did lead us into the right direction. And some of these issues with, that we're talking about tonight with the residential burglaries, there have been a couple that have been, got information from a video, not good enough to link the person to a crime or solve the crime, but it does give us a lot of information. And there's very good possibility with good camera systems and properly aligned that, that can solve issues. And then, Mayor, you also mentioned about registering those. So, when we go and investigate a crime, we always do a canvas, so we'll talk to neighbors around the site of the crime to see if they saw anything and check to see if there's cameras. But if you register a camera, that's also a nice way of following up on criminal actions as well.
Eric?
Yeah, just a question regarding the people that do go door-to-door and selling. Are they supposed to be licensed by the city of Darien?
All solicitors have to be licensed by the city, and they all come to me, and I have signed one of those in probably since summer, maybe even mid or early summers. I haven't signed one in a long time.
I mean, is that something that they're supposed to provide to the resident when they show up at the door? That, is there something that can show them that they are licensed?
Yeah, they have the receipt from the city, so they can look at that.
So, residents should ask them for that, for that license, to see their license.
I would, absolutely.
We have an ordinance that covers all of that, including, we give residents no solicitation signs, which means they're prohibited from going to those houses.
Well, then, 911. I've got a big sign in my, in my window.
Then you call 911.
Then dial 911, we'll come over and take care of that business as well. Absolutely.
You know, because I did call, I have called twice in the past, or once last year when I had somebody show up at my door, no uniforms, no nothing, they were selling windows, but they had no pamphlets and they had no brochure. I mean, they had not even a notepad. So, I knew right away, so immediately I called 911. So, I mean, those are the kind of things that I think people see that. If it doesn't make sense, you've just got to call right, and don't hesitate, just call.
Yeah. Don't feel bad about it, just make the phone call. You pay good money, and you should get a very good return on that, those tax dollars for us to return or respond.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Is there an exemption for political or religious solicitation?
Correct. There is.
Okay, so people should be aware of that, too.
Yep, that's a good point.
Because I notice a lot of times.
Anything else? Alderman Belzak?
Just a quick question, because it's the holiday season and everyone buys from Amazon. I've seen stuff on social media regarding people's packages being stolen. Is that something you would call the police regarding or how long? I mean, I guess if it shows it's delivered from Amazon and then it's, it's gone.
Yeah, because you get those email updates and all the other stuff, says that, you know, your package has been, your package is on its way, your package is almost there, your package is 10 minutes away, it's, your package is there, it's been there for 20 minutes. You get all those updates. So, you know that you got that package, and it's not there, then make the phone call and we'll, we'll come investigate.
You know, we had Chief Shannon Gillett from Downers Grove at our Rotary meeting last week, and he was talking about, Amazon's probably got a lot more of the cart, their vans that say Amazon, but, you know, up until recently, there was a lot of the white panel vans, and he was, he was always saying, because people are assuming that that van is, is an Amazon van. He said, he goes, if the guy's walking up to the house with a package, it may be Amazon, but that same guy's walking away from it, you can't call 911.
Correct.
We assume, we assume it's an Amazon guy, but if he's walking back to the car with a package, you got to call.
And because there are so much, you know, it's not year-round that they're delivering that many packages. So, there are going to be independent contractors, and they're not going to be, you know, have the same type of markings. So, you're absolutely right to, to watch, watch those type of things.
Mary?
You just might want to check your neighbor's front porch, too, because I've had several packages just end up across the street. So, just a point.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else for the Chief? Mr. Gronbeck, any questions for Dan for Municipal Services? All right, that takes us to the Treasuries report. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting Council's approval of warrant number 192016, the amount of $728,768.57 from the listed fund payroll for the period ended November 21st, and the amount of $334,066.95 for a total be approved of $1,062,835.52.
Motion to approve Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments or concerns? Alderman Kenny?
Just a couple of things. Mr. Mayor, we didn't have a work session this evening for Treasury. I'm looking on the warrant for a computer for Jason Norton being replaced, but it's under administration. Wouldn't that typically be with the police, you know, on the police fund or no?
It's budgeted. All the computers are budgeted under administration, yes. There are some things that were related to the squad cars that may come out of the cars, but all of our, we did that a couple of years back, keep better record of the, of the replacement plan.
Okay. Monthly block service, 5130, that number seemed kind of high. That's kind of monthly expense, is it, for AIS?
Yeah, it generally, generally runs about $4,000, and that, that one probably had an additional.
That one had some over-block hours, but we had budgeted for replacement of some computers that they, that fell within that. But yeah, that's our monthly retainer.
I'm going to, you know, I can, I can sing, and I, I'm going to go into it, because a thousand, a thousand dollars for Friday night for those, God bless them, but man, I could do.
For what? I'm sorry?
Ross, Ross Fale for the anniversary gala. I, I didn't know. I didn't read the newspaper. I didn't know. Sorry.
Any other questions for our Treasurer? If none, the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Thon?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The warrant is approved. The next warrant, Michael?
Next warrant has no musical expenses indicated, requesting Council's approval. Warrant number 192017, the amount of $452,023.69 in payroll for the period ended December 5th, and the amount of $278,889.77 for a total to be approved of $730,913.46.
Motion to approve Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Questions and comments? If none, the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Thon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The warrant is approved. Michael, the monthly report?
Revenue and expenditure report for the seven months ended November 30th. General Fund year-to-date revenue of $10,547,250. Expenditures $7,900,258. Current balance $3,461,241. Water Fund year-to-date revenue $5,114,937. Expenses of $3,262,722. Current balance $3,489,460. Motor Fuel Tax Fund year-to-date revenue $416,156. Expenditures of $234,590. Current balance $529,908. Water Depreciation Fund year-to-date revenue $12,104. Expenditures of $366,260. Current balance $2,207,405. And the Capital Improvement Fund year-to-date revenue $273,238. Expenditures of $4,607,993. Current balance of $4,702,499.
Thank you, Mike. Anything else, Michael, you wanted to present? Okay. Standing Committee reports, and Alderman have anything? Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Mayor. Next Monday, Municipal Services will have a meeting at 7:00 PM, that's December 23rd, in Council Chambers.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Sullivan?
The next Economic Development Committee meeting will be January 8th at 7:00 PM in Council Chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Kenny?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Our Police Committee meeting was canceled this evening for lack of agenda items. Our next meeting will be on Monday, January 20th at 6:00 PM across the street in the police training room.
Thank you very much.
She didn't, Mary, you didn't mention about Admin Finance?
I did not, because I wasn't sure what the status is of the January 6th meeting.
As far as we know at this time, it's.
The council meeting most likely will be canceled. We don't officially do that till probably another week or so, but at this point, we would not.
So, as, as of this point, until further notice, the Admin Finance Committee will meet at 6:00 PM on Monday, January 6th prior to City Council meeting. If there's no City Council meeting, the Admin Finance Committee will be canceled.
But Dan, and I'm not sure what items you might have. We have not yet talked about that in terms of any items that might need to go to that meeting. Sometimes if the, if the meeting falls around January 1st or 2nd, it's canceled, but this will have to check and get the word out to the council.
We may have a couple items in one, one might be of importance depending on the next couple of meetings that take place.
Anything else? That takes us to questions and comments. These, again, are agenda-related. If you have comments to make on anything on the agenda tonight, I realize people went forward and made comments earlier this evening. If you like to make a comment now, you can do that. If not, you can wait till the item comes up. Anybody care to make any comment at this point? Dan? Either now or when we actually discuss the item. Okay. It takes us to old business there being none. It takes us to the consent agenda, and please stay with me. This is lengthy. Item A, consideration of motion granting a waiver of a Rappel license bond requirement for the Darien Lions Club. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the city of Darien, which are charging stations, chargers, and microphones. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreement for the reciprocal reporting of criminal offenses committed by students between the Board of Education of Hinsdale Township High School District 86 and the city of Darien. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreement before the, between the Board of Education of Hinsdale Township High School District 86 and the city of Darien, authorizing the city police department's emergency access to school security video feeds and radio frequencies. Item E, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Board of Education of Hinsdale Township High School District 86 and the city of Darien, authorizing school resource officer services from 2019 to 2021. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of a three-year employee assistance program from Comm Site Guidance Resources worldwide in the amount of $5,475. Item G, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from RGL Two Incorporated at the proposed schedule of prices for the placement of topsoil and for the purchase and placement of fertilizer and sod for landscape restoration services for a period of May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Item H, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a contract extension with EJ USA Incorporated for East Jordan Water Master 5BR 250 and East Jordan Water Master 5CD 250 fire hydrant repair parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Item E, I, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving the contract extension with Core and Main LP for the Mueller Super Centurion Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Item J, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a contract extension with Z-Bell Water Service Products for Traverse City Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Item K, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a contract extension with Z-Bell Water Services Products Incorporated for the Water S Pacer Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Item L, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a contract extension with Z-Bell Water Service Products for the U.S. Pipe Fire Hydrant Repair Parts at the proposed unit prices as required for a period of May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Item M, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a contract extension with Core and Main LP for General Water Department Utility Fixtures for the Maintenance of the Water System for a period of May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Item N, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a contract extension with Z-Bell Water Services Products for General Water Department Utility Tools and marking supplies for the Maintenance of the Water System for a period of May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Item O, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a contract extension with Water Products Companies for various water valves for the Maintenance of the Water System for a period of May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Item P, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal for Underground Pipe and Valve Company for culvert metal pipes, metal bands, and metal flared end sections and fittings at the proposed unit prices. at the proposed unit prices for various public works projects for a period of May first, two thousand twenty, through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Item Q, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal for Underground Pipe and Valve Company for high-density polyethylene pipes, HTPE bands, layered end sections and fittings at the proposed unit prices for various public works projects for a period of May first, two thousand twenty, through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Item R, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal for EJ USA Incorporated for storm sewer structures, iron sewer grates, concrete adjusting rings at the proposed unit prices for various public works projects for a period of May first, two thousand twenty, through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Item S, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Pavement Systems Incorporated for the removal and replacement of bituminous aprons and road patches at the proposed unit, proposed unit prices as required for various public works projects for a period of May first, two thousand twenty, through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Item T, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from JC Landscaping and Tree Services Incorporated at the proposed schedule of prices for the Rear Yard Drainage Assistance Program for a period of May first, two thousand twenty, through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Item U, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal for the purchase and delivery at, of stone at the proposed unit prices from Vulcan Construction Materials LLC, delivered to the City of Darien for various public works projects for a period of May first, two thousand twenty, through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Item V, consideration of motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal for the purchase and pickup of stone at the proposed unit prices from Vulcan Construction Materials LLC for various public works projects for a period of May first, two thousand twenty, through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Item W, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from XBE LLC at a rate of ninety-five dollars per hour for services relating to hauling waste for a period of May first, two thousand twenty, through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Item X, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution approving a contract extension with EJ USA Incorporated for East Jordan CD Two Fifty Fire Hydrants, Valves, and Accessories at the proposed unit of prices as required for a period of May first, two thousand twenty, through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Item Y, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of the de-icing and anti-icing product, uh, product, therma-point R at the unit price of one dollar and nine cents per gallon from Industrial Sources Limited in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars, twenty-seventh, five hundred and twenty-three gallons times one dollar and nine cents a gallon. And finally, item Z, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the City of Darien Public Works for a two thousand five Caterpillar TH Two Twenty B load ball machine and Ryan sod cutter. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Sullivan.
Belzak.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Consent agenda is approved. It takes us to new business. The first item under new business is consideration of a motion to direct staff to negotiate a formal economic agreement with Jemco and Associates Limited within the general terms identified by staff. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Discussion. Alderman Belzak.
Just to be clear, what we're voting on now is for our ability to go back to Mr. Manos and work out some type of negotiation. We're not voting to approve this. We're not voting to spend the money today. We're just voting to come back with a final resolution of how it should be worked out.
Correct. And then when that agreement is reached, you'll vote on that.
But, I mean, I believe that the council is looking for direction, whether to move forward with negotiating with Mr. Manos on doing plan, one plan versus the other.
My point was voting yes today doesn't mean you're voting yes tomorrow.
Spend the money.
Right. Alderman Gustafson?
Yeah, question I have, and I, I meant, talked to, to the city planner last week, was I don't believe, you know, the City of Darien has any kind of aesthetic requirement like a lot of communities around us have.
There were certain projects that we used to say we didn't want drive-it. We didn't, we wanted brick and more, you know, and, but that's why we wanted you to see the difference between the, the drive-it versus the brick.
Well, that's why I'd like to see, you know, brick be, have to be a standard in Darien and not something that people could do the other. Why not, why not force them to do it? I, other, and I was talking with the planner and the communities he's worked for all had a requirement out there.
Dan, do, I thought we used to have a require, did we, or do we still have that?
We don't have any type of architectural requirements for a brick, uh, brick facade. As far as a dumpster goes, uh, brick enclosure on a dumpster, that's probably something more that we do have, um, in the code. But other than that, um, there's nothing that regulates any business, um, for what they can put up unless they're in a homeowners association and there's covenants that, uh, come-
I mean, I, I'd like to see the city, you know, pursue that, at least take a look at it and see what other communities around us-
Yeah, we would have to talk to our city attorney. I'm sure there's court cases and, and laws regarding, you know, our ability to require certain upgrades that are of aesthetic, you know, but we can check with him.
But yeah, other communities do have it. And Joe's been familiar with working with those in the past where he did work. So, I think there's, might be some opportunity here to, you know, if we're gonna do some of these improvements, let's make sure we've got a standard out there that we want followed for the city.
And it's not a drive-it product, it's a stucco product, correct? Cause they're, they're two totally different products. Am I not mistaken?
In, in my opinion, they're one and the same. I mean, whether it's a stucco or an EPHAS system, basically the, the majority of the construction is the same in both situations.
Cause I know that when I was working in, you know, in Hinsdale, there was a lot of properties where they had to remove the, the drive-it because water is getting down inside and mold issues and everything else like that. So to, you know, to a, to a brick product, that's something we, you know, you know, the business owner or us for that matter would have to, would have to worry about some kind of, um, construction later on for, you know, mold repair, whatever the case may be.
That's correct.
Somebody told, somebody told me that drive-it, uh, when it is on a home, would peckers have a tendency to gather there more? I don't know if that's true or not.
I've heard of that with cedar, but not with drive-its.
Okay.
Because if you require brick, then could that potentially lose the business case for opening the building then, that location?
Is, is it what?
If you require, for, as, uh, Alderman Gustafson said, to make that a brick facade, would that potentially eliminate the business case of opening a building because you're putting that requirement there?
Well, it kill the deal. Well, at this point, yeah, probably kill it, but at this point, we're not, I don't think we can do that after the fact. And we can, you know, the strong-arming method of, you know, to big city, telling a developer what to do. Um, I know, like Brian said, there's a lot of law cases out there, um, that have been visited.
Yeah, so potentially if you did that, say, long-term, that could have a negative effect on others wanting to come in.
Sure, I mean, unless it's, you know, again, on a redevelopment perhaps, or whatever the case is, architectural aesthetic codes.
Anything else? Now the roll.
Belzak.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion is approved. Item B, under new business, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance amending Title A, zoning regulations of the Darien City Code by adding a new chapter, I, nine A cannabis business establishments thereto. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. And now discussion.
Um, I'm looking to make an amendment to the motion. Is that something I would do at this time during the discussion?
That you'd want to specify what part of it you're gonna make the amendment and then you would need a second to that.
Okay. Okay. Well, um, is, I mean, do I, should I do that now or should I let other people discuss first? Or would you like me to get going on?
I'll make your amendment.
Okay, I'll go ahead.
Then we can discuss the amendment before we go on it.
So, if we approved this amendment, this is just for this one item on this, and that still means that this may not pass for everybody at home to understand, correct?
Basically, for the people at home and the people here, this item deals with the, the proposed zoning ordinance changes with regard to the establishment of a cannabis location.
Which we have ten items on there, or ten locations, and this is just changing one of those items out of that time.
Mary's interested in changing one.
So, I would like to make a motion to amend the ordinance amending Title Five A zoning regulation for the City of Darien Code, new Title Nine A cannabis business establishments. Um, I am proposing we disregard the recommendation by Municipal Services. End of title agreement, Attachment A, optional dispensary sites. I hereby motion to remove Option Two and Three, Brookhaven Plaza, from the recommended sites. The Brookhaven Plaza location should not be an option for the following reasons. Other sites were not recommended by Municipal Services.
Mary, if I, if you could just state the motion and then your rationale after we-
Okay, that's my motion, I'm stating that.
We have a second.
Second.
Now we have discussion, now, Mary, go ahead.
Okay, by the floor? Okay.
Okay, Mary, I'm sorry, uh, Alderman, just to clarify, um, because there are a couple different types of locations, your motion again is to remove those from the Brookhaven Plaza and put those in prohibited uses as part of the ordinance.
Correct.
Because we do have others that are special use. This is to-
I am looking, my motion should include that the site would not be recommended and be prohibited.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second, now let's have discussion, Mary.
Okay. So, the Brookhaven Plaza location should not be an option for the following reasons. Other sites were not recommended by Planning and Zoning and Municipal Services because of their proximity to schools, daycares, and youth sports facilities. The karate-for-kids unit is located just two spaces down from the proposed cannabis dispensary site at Brookhaven Plaza. I do not think that the two hundred and fifty feet rule should apply for a dispensary like it does for a liquor store. It should be the fifteen hundred feet from a facility that attracts youth and youth sports just like it does for the schooling and daycare. The, um, law states that daycares and schools need to be fifteen hundred feet away. Secondly, Brookhaven Plaza and the fountain area, which is the Darien Point across the street, are considered the center of Darien. We are even discussing the possibility of a marquee sign at the corner of Brookhaven Plaza. This area attracts families, grocery shop, shoppers, um, people eating out, and most importantly, our youth often bike to that area on a daily basis in the summer to meet up with friends and hang out. Thirdly, Option One under the ordinance, um, that is being proposed, which is the Walgreens property at Brookhaven Plaza, was not recommended by Planning and Zoning or Municipal Services because of its proximity to Lace Elementary School, which is right across the street from Brookhaven Plaza as a whole. Schools must be fifteen hundred feet away. The parking lot for Walgreens is the same parking lot for the proposed dispensary site. In my opinion, a shared parking lot constitutes it being the same complex and site. Lastly, when we first discussed the cannabis dispensary back in the early fall, we had some initial, um, discussion and conclusion that if the dispensary was to come to Darien, the one dispensary, that it would be situated in the bordering areas of town like Route Eighty-Three, Seventy-Fifth and Le Mans Street, or most importantly, in an industrial park. The thought of Brookhaven Plaza being an option directly contradicts with our original dialogue. The reality is that cannabis has been legalized in the state of Illinois and many other states. Even though I voted no and wanted to opt out of cannabis sales in Darien, the majority of the council voted to opt in for a dispensary, for one dispensary. I am sitting here tonight representing the interests of a large number of residents in our community and attempting to put limits on the location in order to protect our community's family-focused image today and for future years. We do not need to showcase a dispensary by putting it in the center of our town where young children gather and families go to every day. The optics are bad. It will forever change the landscape of our community-friendly, family atmosphere. People who choose to visit a dispensary will seek it out. They will come from other communities since so few areas near us have chosen to sell cannabis and issue a dispensary approval. Make it more accessible to these visitors by having it right off the highway. If we do not make a conscious effort today to adopt the changes that I have proposed, I truly believe it will have a long-term impact on Darien's image and it will no longer be viewed as a nice place to live for families.
And anything else? Alderman Kenny?
I do, um, yeah. I, I commend you on everything you, you've said here today, and that, that's my word. And, you know, I couldn't have done half of the job as you've done to Alderman Sullivan, so, you know, my, my hat's off to you. Cannabis nationwide, Colorado, Washington, California. Now we're gonna have it here, here in Illinois, here in, you know, in ten days or so. Um, we don't know, the, the verdict is still out in those communities of, you know, has it been a good thing for those states? Has it been a bad thing for those states? We don't know. To, to go ahead and put cannabis in the City of Darien, we, there's one, we have one license, okay? We can't stop the cannabis now because, like you said, four Aldermen voted to have cannabis in town. Three of us have not. I'm asking that we take only the one license, to your point, and put it someplace else along, along the perimeter of, of our town. Route Eighty-Three, Seventy-Fifth and Le Mans Road. We have the karate school. I remember Mayor Weaver, when we were putting in Darien Point, she went ahead and put, you know, certain businesses that she did not want to see in that, one of them was being a liquor store again. Even there was a, a liquor store there prior. Mayor Weaver has a vision of what she wanted to see into, into the downtown. And I think we need to keep that going. We've invested a lot of money, a lot of resources. It sounds like we're gonna start, you know, adding a lot more, or some more resources here. If you read the letter that Mr. Manos said, sent as part of the packet here in the, in the previous item, they themselves know that that space is gonna be, their realtor and their lender said this, this might be risky because of, you're only having two, you're only having two businesses that are within, um, that spot. For us to then to go ahead and, you know, invest, and I would love to see something solid there. We had that no-name gas station forever. We have that parking lot, but it's been a, it's been a eyesore. It would, it's great to have, you know, a Dunkin' Donuts and a restaurant sitting there. I mean, you know, it's only two businesses, but you only have space for that. And to put a shop with cannabis, and we have no idea, and we have no idea if it's gonna be a good thing or a bad thing. I say, don't think we should be a pioneer at this point. Um, you know, it's, it's kind of, it's not, my wife hates me when I do this, but it's, you know, it's analogies. You know, we have a dog at home and if she, if she soils, if she soils a carpet, I go get this, I get the, the spot remover, whatever it is. And if you read the directions and it says, hey, take, take your spot remover and find an unconcealed spot, you know, hidey spot on your carpet and test it first. And see, and see if it's gonna discolor. And then you go ahead and if it, if it works, then you can go to the center, center of the carpet and, and, and spray and whatever you gotta do. This is the same thing. We don't want to turn around and put this business right in the, right in the center and it turn out to be a, a bad, a bad thing. I don't want to take, I don't want to take that risk. I don't want to risk the, the business owners that are currently there, that their businesses take a decline. Um, maybe five years from now, we sit back and we think, hey, this was, this was, this, maybe this was something we should do. But at this juncture, only one license around the town with a, with a karate school, um, sitting there, lace school on the other, on the other side of Seventy-Fifth Street. One thing also too is, yeah, the bricks and mortar of these places, Eisenhower Lace are sitting there, but those are, those kids, they, they, some of them walk home, some of them go to Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts after school. We don't, we don't, we don't need, we don't need to see that, just because the bricks and mortar is at. Those kids are walking through, you still have kids that are walking across over to Colonial Manor Apartments. Guys, we can't, we can't have it.
Ted?
Um, to all the Aldermen here, and I've said this before, I'm gonna make this argument again, and I want everybody to think about this, okay? I always say, when it comes to the numbers of this town, I'm the money boy, all right? And I'll say this again, all right? Here's the situation that goes on with cannabis. Somebody's mentioned that we might make three hundred thousand dollars off of it. I don't know what we're gonna make, and to be honest with you, I don't care. Here's the point that I'm trying to make on this situation. We have a police force right now that's got about thirty-eight police officers, okay? My ultimate goal is to make sure every police officer retires in the City of Darien and has a full pension. My other, um, goal is to make sure that we never pull what we did or what happened in Willowbrook ten years ago where they had to get rid of nine police officers. Now remember this, folks, all right? The average police officer makes a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars- The average police officer makes $137,000 with benefits in the city of Darien. One more time, the average police officer makes $137,000 with benefits in the city of Darien. If we turn around, we put in a cannabis shop, all right? We're gonna have to have police standing out there, okay? Making sure nothing goes wrong, nobody gets robbed, all this nonsense, all right? We're gonna have to hire at least two, possibly three, police officers. If we hire two, that's gonna cost us $270, $270,000 a year. On top of that, we're gonna also have to feed the pension going forward. This year, at our budget meeting, we're gonna be putting in over $2 million to our pension for the police. My goal is to make sure every one of those police officers has a job, is gonna retire at Darien, and we're not gonna let them any go. On top of that, right now, we're not gonna be able to fund cannabis to get an extra two police officers, or maybe three, or whatever it is, okay? That's the first aspect. The second aspect that goes with this, when it gets right down to it, okay? Families in this town, okay? I've heard a lot of it. I've heard it all, okay? We're 100% correct. I don't want my kids smoking grass. I don't want to see grass around here. Sorry, okay? I'll be the first one to tell you, I smoked it back in high school. I quit when I was a teenager. I'll be the first one to tell you, I don't want my kids around it, I don't want to be around it. That's it. Period, end of discussion. So here's the story that goes with it, okay? And I'm telling you right off the bat, okay? We have fought for a year, okay, to make sure Sterigenics got shut down, okay? We fought day in and day out to make sure that the families are protected. I'm telling you guys right now, we better protect our families by stopping this cannabis crap. And that's where I'm gonna leave it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Aldi, oh, yeah, I was gonna, just gonna say, in my word, we put a liquor store and gaming right next to Our Lady Peace and the church, and I'm the only one to vote against it. So, we're all about families, just remember how we voted just last year. With regards to the cannabis and the Darien Plaza here, I would support Mrs., your motion. One of the things I've been reading in Michigan, where they do have it approved, locations where they have opened it, you have lines out the door, and as you mentioned, that's really not an image we want to portray in Darien. So I would be in support of modifying the amendment to prevent Brookhaven from having a license there, so.
Alderman Gustafson?
Yeah, I, I spent 45 minutes today walking around Brookhaven, just to see, what is this Brookhaven like? You know, I started with the grocery store. Beautiful grocery store when you go in, but then you go to one end of the store, and there's liquor all over the place, okay? You come around, you come out, okay, gave up on that, came outside, came around the corner, what do I run into but a gambling institution? Okay? So I hit that. Said, okay, I wanna keep going. So I keep going, walk around a little bit. Lo and behold, I see these huge tacky signs up in the cigarette and liquor store. Sure enough, you know, I, no problem, go right in there, no problem there. Then even I walked all the way down to the Walgreens, and sure enough, go inside the Walgreens, what's in the Walgreens but liquor? Okay? And they sell opioids, okay? Now liquor, cigarettes, and opioids all kill people. Marijuana, people do not die from marijuana, okay? They do not die, according to the CDC, they do not die from marijuana. You would have to smoke 800 joints in one sitting, and then you will die from carbon monoxide, not from cannabis. Okay? That's according to the CDC. So here you are, you've got this center over there, where we've got three places selling liquor, and also the Walgreens sold cigarettes, two selling cigarettes, and a gambling institution that's over there. I mean, if we go ahead and don't allow cannabis, I wanna, I wanna make a motion that we eliminate liquor, cigarettes, and gambling out of Brookhaven Plaza. They should not be there. Now, however, however, we cannot do that going backwards, as my understanding, we'd have to put something in going forward, so if there ever was a change. But, you know, my question would be to Mr. Manos, what happens to that center if all those businesses go away? There's already five open spaces sitting over in Brookhaven right now. One large one from, from the hardware store that was there. I would venture to guess, you take all that out, Brookhaven would not exist tomorrow. It's not gonna support it without those businesses in there.
I got two additional points. To your point of the gaming facility that came through, probably about five years ago now. When that gaming facility came here to the city of Darien, and they approached us, it wasn't gonna be a gaming facility, it was gonna be a restaurant with gaming. And what we got was egg in the face, we got gaming with restaurant. I remember walking in with Mike Sunt, Scott Corren, and you've heard me say this before, a week after they opened up, we went in there for lunch, and I got a ham and cheese sandwich out of a plastic bag, thrown in the microwave with Fritos, and the sandwich still sucked, okay? Some, some of your group asked me how the sandwich was after that, and I, I didn't, I let it go. That's one. Secondly, if we all look at our emails tonight, the people that elect us, that put us in an office, have all said, no, they don't want this in Brookhaven Plaza, that's the only thing that matters.
Yeah, and I, I wanna finish what, what I was stating here too, and is that, you know, all, if I'm a 15-year-old kid and I'm going over to Brookhaven with my buddies, I can get physical access to the liquor and cigarettes. And if I really wanted to, I could walk away with that product, okay? Now, if I walk over to the cannabis store, I'm gonna hear my, walking with my buddies, I'm gonna pull open the door, whoa, wait a minute, there's the security guard here. I've gotta be 21 to get into here, okay? I'm protected from cannabis, I'm not protected from the liquor and the cigarettes. They are the product that ends up killing me in the long run anyway. So let's not fool ourselves to this Brookhaven Center that we over here. It's not a place for kids to ride their bikes to and go to, not with the various locations and businesses that are being operated out of there now. If you truly want that image, you're gonna have to change the complete image of it, and then you're not gonna have a center for them to go to. This is a shopping center. This is not, you know, a little amusement park where the little kiddie rides are there, okay? That's not what this is.
Alderman Belzak, wanna say something first, or should I go back to Alderman?
Actually, I was gonna agree with Alderman Gustafson until he brought up that last topic, is if you're under 21, you're not getting in the cannabis store.
That's what I said.
I know, that's what I said, I'm agreeing with you, and I was gonna raise that, he beat me to it. Uh, and you have access to the other stores that he mentioned, so if, if, if we're putting blinders on our kids and saying, you can't look at things, uh, they can't get in the cannabis store, but they can get into the other stores.
I, just for the clarification for the audience, Mr. Manos wants to build a building on the corner, 3,500 square feet. Uh, 2,100 square feet of that would be the current Dunkin' Donuts moving into the new location. The other 1,400 will be an Italian restaurant, pizzeria, calzone shop. So, what they're talking, I think what most of the members of the council are alluding to, is the vacant Dunkin' Donuts shop, and I believe that's the prime location that they're talking about, plus the travel agency that exists, because she is retiring, and they're talking about all that space. I just wanted people to know what space we're talking about. Mary?
Couple of points. So I had the opportunity back in September, when this topic was obviously hot on the agenda here, when I was in Las Vegas, to do a field trip to a dispensary. And I'm sure many people in this room have been to Las Vegas. You hear of the strip, and there's restaurants, and there's all these gambling institutions, but you do not find the dispensaries on the Las Vegas Strip next to the hotels. They are tucked away behind the strip in an industrial park, where they are all located, they are large facilities, and, you know, I, I had the opportunity, I wanted to go in and see what this was all about. Also nearby are the strip clubs. So they're in good company over there, and, you know, eventually, will, you know, if, will strip clubs be something that Darien's gonna want, and maybe a tattoo parlor? Um, you know, there was a lot of crying out years ago, when there was a cash-for-gold place in the old center strip mall, which is now the Darien Point. People were up in arms about that, because they thought it was like a pawn shop, and I'm just trying to, because I am, I think, one of the few people sitting at this counter that actually has a 16-year-old right now, and I can say firsthand from experience, he does not lead his life with blinders on, and kids can get access to anything these days. I'm just trying to keep our standards and try to keep our community as family-based as possible, and having a dispensary in the center of what we call our crown jewel, our city center, we should be trying to attract more family-friendly. I'm not looking for an arcade, those are things of the past, but family-friendly businesses and not a dispensary. I don't want a dispensary in anywhere in Darien, but if I've lost that battle, I'm gonna continue to fight this one.
I mean, how many, here's a question, I'm sorry, but how many people do we expect to get into a cannabis store in the middle of Brookhaven? What's the number? Do we know? The point is, we're having problems trying to figure out parking right now with Brookhaven, and we're gonna make it worse?
With the new corner thing, there's gonna be more business there.
Like, Ted, I think people also need to understand, though, and I'm in no way defending anything, one way or the other. Regardless of whether there's a cannabis dispensary in the city of Darien, Darien police are still gonna have to deal with the ramifications of legalized marijuana. Because if Darien doesn't have a location, Darien residents and others will go to Westmont or wherever else, or wherever they have a, a location, and they're gonna come back into Darien, and they're gonna drive on our streets. So what you mentioned with regard to the police, we're gonna see that regardless, whether or not it's, we sell it or someone else sells it, then.
We're gonna have to have more police outside of a facility.
I think, I mean, I just need to make that point clear, I want people to, just because we don't have one, doesn't mean we're not gonna have a problem. Lester?
But having one will exponentially increase, because people from outside of our community will be coming in.
I understand that, Mary. And Lester?
Um, I'd like to weigh in on, uh, security. These facilities have to submit detailed security plans on how they're gonna protect their establishment, and I don't think we're gonna have to increase our police officers. We have to increase our training, but we won't have to increase our police officers to two or three, because these facilities already have a security plan, they have security companies that work for them, uh, and they protect their establishment. Like Alderman Gustafson was saying, you have to be 21 to get in, they check your ID before you, it's, they check your ID even before you get into the facility. So, you know, to, to make this statement...
There's no fake ID, no one would ever come with a fake ID.
Well, you know, whoever's gonna be disingenuous will be, you know? You know, but what I'm, what I look at is that, what the economic boost that this would give to our community, it will probably give us the revenue to support those pensions that you're talking about, to support the economic development that we're talking about. So to have it somewhere tucked away where people can't find it, uh, it just opens up a, a door for those who will be disingenuous, or, you know, some type of, of crime to happen. But if you have it visible, people are less likely to do something illegal if it's visible. So, um, I have, I'm a, I have my father of two. I have kids, I'm, I'm concerned about their health and safety, but when it comes to like the economic revenue that we can generate from this business, and as Ann was saying, her business is gonna look like a boutique. It's not gonna be something that looks like a liquor store, where you, you walk in, and there are signs on the windows and stuff, it's gonna look like a boutique. It's very neat, it's very clean, and it's very well-run, you know? So, you know, whether, you know, cannabis is here, you know, whether we like it or not, how we adjust to that change is very important. You know, change isn't always good, you know, but it's here, you know, it's here, and we have to adjust to that, as, as a city, and, and figure out how we can embrace it and incorporate it into our community, so, you know.
To your point, so she, so Mr. Murphy puts in a really nice boutique shop. There's no guarantee that that boutique shop will be there, you know, five years from now, and then something else comes in there, and, and that is good, and that's what we're doing here today, is we're, we're setting zoning for these things. I believe that, I would like to see it on the outside of the skirts, to see how, how the business is run, and then in five years, you know, from now, re, you know, re, you look at it, maybe an extra license, or maybe a different zoning. But, but for right now, it's too new, and I don't believe putting it in the center, Darien, is the, and Darien Point or Brookhaven is the idea.
I'd like to ask, Ann, just one question, in that, can you address the idea of security? You own two businesses already, could you just share it with us? What kind of security is present? And come to the microphone and share that. That seems to be a concern.
Two points. To start, Bea is a licensed private detective and president, I think, of the state private detective agency. So in addition to her experience with security, and also as my co-owner, the security portion of our application is one-fifth of the application, it's a 60-page limit, single-spaced. We hired the highest qualified security company we could find, which is far greater than the market rate in terms of our out-of-pocket cost. We already have a layover floor plan just for security, and all of that would be installed. It does require by law that we have a security person present as long as we're open, and obviously cameras everywhere else. And from a security standpoint as well, two points. You know, it is a municipal debate, those, those municipalities that have opted in, do you want the building on the outskirts of the city, or do you want it in a more populated area? And it really is city by city, and I completely respect that. Some cities say, when you have it on the outskirts, it is harder for police to provide the regular patrols, whereas if you have it in a city center, they're patrolling anyways, and it's just easier for them to keep an eye out. So, again, that's city by city, but I, I did think I'd throw that in there for you.
And just one more question, because I know there's people in the audience who want to talk. For the sake of, of discussion, revenue and staffing, you talked a little bit about who you would hire, and you talked about potential revenue.
Yes. From a revenue standpoint, the best I can speak to is how my family has done out of state. We've got one medical dispensary in small-town Connecticut, and they average 1 million a month in revenue. And I did double-check the statute, it is 5% revenue to whatever city would be willing to take us. So, at a minimum, I would imagine that's 50,000 a month to the city of Darien, 600 a year. If there was a 50% increase, which I think would be reasonable, because this is also adult use, 1.5, that's 75,000 a month, 900 a year, if that were to double, and I don't wanna speak out of turn, 2,100,000 a month, 1.2 a year. From a job standpoint, I think we've, we're looking to hire about 17 full-time employees, and then various part-time employees as well, so there's certainly job opportunities.
The licensed pharmacist, you said on...
And we are looking to have, we have one that we've spoken with, that we're, we plan to sign on, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then how many people come through your store on a daily basis?
That I have not asked my Connecticut components, but they did start off in a much smaller storefront than us, and, and did outgrow it, and they, they're now in an old bank building, and they, she recommended at least 50 parking spaces for use throughout the day.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Doesn't your security just stay inside the facility? Do they patrol outside the facility, the parking lot? I know, obviously, the ordinance does not allow for consumption on-site, but there's nothing stopping somebody from consuming in their vehicle in the parking lot.
Two answers to that question, and I, and I hope we're easy to work with, you can be the verdict on that. But, you know, if, if you wanted more, we could provide that in terms of security. If you wanted something outside and inside, if you wanted this person to do both, we could work with our security expert to work out those details. And I think, without any doubt, Bea would agree, and same as our dispensary is out of state, that there is absolutely no consumption on-site. There's been, the Connecticut dispensary, for example, there's been zero security issues in five years, but for two phone calls to the police for attempted consumption in the parking lot.
And all these sites are cash-only, right? There's no, everything's cash?
Correct.
So is there a threat of like burglaries and...
Typical, almost like a bank, there is a Brink's truck that would arrive, pick up cash, and, and deposit it at the local bank.
And don't most dispensaries, aren't they usually standalone buildings by themselves versus being in, like a strip mall?
Uh, good question, they're absolutely both. Obviously, the, the banks are a preferred location, because they are standalone with your own parking lot, but they also have a vault inside, which is something we'd also have installed too, it's part of our floor plan.
Can, can you describe the process of when you, once you enter the, the dispensary, what the process is like, so the people at home get some idea of that process?
Absolutely. And I'd recommend anyone, you know, who's able, even if they're not purchasing, just to walk through one, to, to see what it's like. But when you would walk in, there's one entrance and one exit, and they are separate from each other, so that it's a flow of traffic in one direction. When you walk in, I think the Dunkin' Donuts already has double doors, if I recall, that would become what security people call a mantrap. So you are brought into the front kind of vestibule, and there's a window there, they check your ID, your name, et cetera, and then another door is opened up to a waiting room. And when it's your turn, you are there, then called in through that door into what's considered the retail dispensary area, where there's educational materials about the product, you know, consultants to help you choose what products you might be... you know, consultants to help you choose what products you might be interested in, the retail checkout counter, and then you exit through a similar mantrap door through the exit. So it's very regulated who can come in and out.
There's a economic, not economic, but a community engagement plan that goes along with the submission of your application. Can you talk about the community engagement, what you guys will do if you're allowed to come into Darien? Like what kind of programs will you support? I know you mentioned sports plaques and other things. But if you can put a dollar amount to it, what would that be? How significant would that contribution be to like certain, certain aspects of community engagement?
Very good question. I already reached out to the Chamber of Commerce, even though we're not licensed in doing business in the city yet, just as kind of a meet and greet. I'm aware of your Darien Dash, your Fall Fest, and I understand you had a gala that I missed out on this weekend. My mom was in town. But nonetheless, that's something we'd like to fully support. I recently closed down a nonprofit that I opened 10 years ago. I've been able to raise well over $50,000 over those years to assist about a dozen blind orphans in Nepal that I had the honor of meeting. And there's absolutely no reason why I couldn't, you know, work in that same capacity on a more local level. I'm part of Rotary, so they, it's the two-component piece, right? You do the local and you do the international. Certainly, I could, you know, work to bring those talents locally.
Alderman Delza?
Yeah, I had a quick question regarding the Safe Banking Act. If that does pass the Senate and is signed into law, how would that change how dispensaries are run?
That's a good question, you know. I think it would just give customers and us the opportunity to use credit, the cards more. And that just, to me, seems safer. I, you know, I don't tend to carry cash anyways, but, so yes, I think that would be very helpful. But I don't think it changes the fact that, you know, these dispensaries will find banks. It just is harder this way and, you know, it's a difficult environment to work in as a business.
Eric?
Can you, I mean, so you do have interest in the Brookhaven location, correct? And I just like, if you do, I just kind of get an understanding of why that location. So we can a little better understand from a business standpoint of what you see.
So I do think the city of Darien, for everyone's robust opinions, I think it creates for a healthy community. And I thank everyone here, too, for helping me understand what properties that everyone was looking at, that you wanted as a community, if this was going to happen at all. We went to every single property that was proposed, you know, in, in interest in being as agreeable and cooperative as possible. What we found is most of the, all but one, we were unable to move into. We're looking at leases that aren't available for seven years or anchor stores that have been here for years who have restrictive covenants with the landlord. And it's basically up to the tenant what other tenants can move in. So, you know, I've reached out to the attorneys, the property owners, the tenants to find out when their leases are up. And literally, this was the only shopping center in Darien that was willing to enter into a letter of intent with us. So my fear is, for those who are interested, obviously, I can't speak to opposition. But, you know, if Darien doesn't work, I don't think this round of licenses going out, and that's in the rare, small event we even get a license, it would come to Darien.
Ann, you mentioned that there are something like 2,000 applicants for 500 licenses. And the process is quite complex.
Yeah, I believe there's, I thought there were 45, maybe just in our region, going out. I think maybe only three in DuPage. Again, that's total hearsay. I can't remember where I got that information. But I think they're expecting over 2,000 applications. So if we're the only business looking in Darien, realistically, our chances of even getting a license are very slim.
And when is your, when is the application due?
The application is due, it's due right now. It's a window through January 2nd. And, you know, we did say-
So it's a short window here that you've got to get-
And we both have families. I'd like to get it in before, you know, the holidays really hit.
Now, and there's, my understanding, it's a point system when you start awarding the licenses. And is it, is it part of the point systems that you have a location selected already and work coordinated out? I mean, is that goal a ways to be able to getting a license? Or what all goes into getting this license?
So the application itself is 250 points. We already talked about 50 of it going to security.
Right.
You know, business and operating plan are obviously a huge chunk. The floor plan on paper says a location is not required. I don't know how the Department of Financial and Professional Regulation look at it, but it's awfully hard to, if I were to submit a proposed floor plan, I still have to pay my security expert to come up with his floor plan. I still have to pay the architect to come up with his floor plan. I'm out thousands of dollars for a proposed floor plan for a non-existent location. And then if I get the license, then I have to scramble, find a location, and pay those guys again to come up with another design. So from a business standpoint, it's obviously financially wise, but it's just, I don't want to pay people to come up with drawings for non-existent buildings.
Your other two locations, are they freestanding or are they in a mall?
The Connecticut option was in a mall and within the year moved to a bank that finally became available, that they were waiting. The Oklahoma location is brand-new construction because there's a lot more space out there on, you know, property that was available.
But the one that was in Connecticut, okay, that, for that one year, how did those other businesses around it get affected?
You know, my aunt said that there was, there was some friction about parking spaces, but she didn't indicate that it was tense or angry. It was just something that kind of worked out as commercial neighbors.
Mary?
So once again, you are not required in the application process to have secured a site?
No.
Okay. So if you knew you had a license and you didn't have a site yet, would that then potentially make you look at other sites that you maybe could not get a letter of intent from, that you might need to purchase versus just get a lease from if you knew you already had a license in your hand?
I, I would be, I have two choices with the money that I've raised. I can put that money into purchasing the property or I could move into a place where I can lease and I can really deck it out. I can make it more of a boutique. So as a startup, I'm not, I'm looking to do what my family did in Connecticut, which was we're going to start here and maybe stay here, maybe not. But, you know, when the business grows, that becomes a greater option.
And then I noticed on the planning and zoning, obviously, there were, I think, 13 sites that were listed. But then there was also the comment that all non-residential business sites were open to be explored. Because I noticed that there were lots of other sites, for instance, bordering our town along Route 83 and some strip malls. I know there's vacant storefronts there that weren't even listed to be reviewed by Planning and Zoning and Municipal Services specifically. So when you say you looked at every possible site, was that just on the options that were in the plan? Or did you look at literally every site in Darien? Like the Jewel Corner, not that I want it there either, but that, that site, along Route 83, right next to Benny's on north and south strip malls have vacant spots. Were those sites explored?
And I wish I could answer that question. Our realtor was supposed to be here tonight because I know he put hours in. His family member was hospitalized.
Okay. No, I just know that there are, beyond the sites that are specifically listed in what Planning and Zoning and Municipal Services looked at, are other sites in Darien that actually border the town versus that are in the center of the town. And once again, I know that sites that are more industrial, like the new warehouse complex on Lamont Road and the older complex, one houses a volleyball facility, new volleyball facility, and the other one hosts the longstanding business of Perfect Swing. But it's a very large industrial place, per the comments by Planning and Zoning and then Municipal Services, were disregarded as possible sites because of youth sports being in those strip malls. Yet I still am so confused by the fact that a karate studio, which is a youth sport for many, my children have gone there, so it's a very longstanding business. Lots of people would be right down, like two doors down from the dispensary. So that's, I just feel it's conflicting into what the model, and this is not even for you, that Planning and Zoning and Municipal Services looked at. It's like contradicting.
I, I think we did look at both of those locations with the volleyball and-
Well, they, they did not recommend it.
Right.
Because of the proximity to a youth sports facility.
That, I know we looked there.
I'm originally, for those who don't know, I'm originally from Michigan that has legalized that a little while ago. In December, they started selling cannabis. And here's this from Crane's Detroit Business. "That exclusive brand situated away from downtown Ann Arbor in an industrial park off of Packer Drive. More than 500 customers were lined up to get cannabis product." I don't know how you fit 500 customers in Darien Point.
Yeah, 500 won't fit in our shop, no.
So they, you know, can you, on the store process, about 100 customers per hour? So I don't, I don't see if we get 400 or 300 there, how do we, how do we process that many?
Yeah, 40. I mean, it's a small storefront. Are they going to slide it outside?
Challenge I just have, just reading from, being from Michigan, seeing that, that over there. And they have three of them in Ann Arbor.
Yeah, I, I do believe, we're looking to double the registers my family has. So they've got five registers in their stores, so we're looking at 10 for ours.
I think we've asked Ann a lot of questions, but I think there's some people in the audience who might want to-
Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you, Ann.
Mr. Mack, do you want to come back?
I do. I definitely do. This was a very interesting exchange. So what am I supposed to make out of all that? That, that these fine people care about our community? No, they care about their bottom line. This is obviously a very profitable business, hugely profitable. So yes, they want the best location they can have in our, our community to make the most amount of money they possibly could. Wow, that's great. What else did I hear? Oh, we're very deferential to the owner of the shopping center because we have empty stores. Do we have empty stores in, in Brookhaven because Darien is a bad place to have a business? No, we have empty stores because we have a crappy landlord who charges too much money, who has chased other good businesses out by raising and raising and raising the rents. Obviously, this business must be capable of paying the enormous rents that this landlord wants in order to make his life better. Who are you here to represent? Are you here to, to do the bidding of the cannabis business? Are you here to do the bidding of the landlord at Brookhaven? Or are you here to actually represent what the majority of people in Darien want? They don't want this. They certainly don't want it in, in Brookhaven Plaza. I think, as I said before, put this to a referendum. You'll find out that they don't want it anywhere in Darien. All I get from this is that you're willing to basically sell out the citizens for the few hundred thousand dollars of revenue that this is going to bring in. Okay, that's a bad trade-off. And lastly, let's look at some other places that have dealt with this. Chicago, Out of Control Chicago. Even in Out of Control Chicago, Lori Lightfoot says, "Don't put this downtown. Put it out, kind of out of sight, out of mind. But we're going to put it right in the heart of Darien." Wow, fantastic, because we're so much smarter than Chicago. Or Michigan. I have a place up in Michigan, South Haven. Michigan-approved cannabis. The city council was kind of like doing what you want it to do. You know, sneak it in, get a, get a business in there. Some people got together, they were smarter than us, they got their act together earlier. They went to the city council, they said, "Put it on the referendum, put it on the ballot." They put it on the ballot and low and behold, in the last election, just a few weeks ago, they said, "No, we don't want it." And so it's not going to happen in the, in the city of South Haven. Why don't we just follow their example and do like they did? Or at the very least, do like Chicago did and put it out of sight, out of mind somewhere, but not in the heart of our community. Thank you.
I'm Sue Duffy, and what I heard was a point that Mr. Kenny made is that they were talking about their store in Connecticut and how quickly they had to move from it to a larger location. And so I see the problem being that we changed zoning. And so we really need to think far-sighted as to what's going to come in after that. We changed the zoning. And I don't want things, I think we definitely need to stay away from schools. And this would allow things to come in there that could be closer to a school that we don't want closer to a school. Because it does sound like they'll be moving quickly out of this location because there's not enough parking and they expect a lot of customers. So that's my point.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for your time. I really do appreciate it. My name's Steve Teich, and my wife is involved in this. I live at 7309 Clardon Hills Road. We've lived there for 25 years. So yes, I can understand where a gentleman's saying that this is a money venture. But my wife and I have contributed to this community since day one of moving into this town. Okay, we've supported every local group you could possibly support. Hinsdale South School, our children went there. Eisenhower, our children went there. Mark Delaney, our children went there, okay? We've supported the Lions Club. We've supported the Women's Chamber of Commerce, or the Darien Women's Council. We have supported each and every one of those groups for 25 years. Forget about those numbers that Ann's been talking about, my wife contributing that. She's done that. We've done that for 25 years. This is not a one-time thing for us. We felt very strongly, when my wife was going through this process, that Darien was a good community to do this in. We would like to contribute back to the community. We've done that our whole lives, okay? So for somebody to come up here and say that we're just out for the money is, I don't think 100% clear picture of what we're about, okay? We live here. We wanted to stay here. We're not some Brazilian corporation that wants to come in here and take the money out of this community. We want to contribute back to this community, okay? And we've done that without this cannabis thing. So I feel very strongly. The proposal is, I can understand, and I appreciate, everybody has their opinions, their things on what are going on over there. But to be honest with you, and the gentleman over there, Mr. Gustafson, I guess it is, has brought up the policy that Walgreens sells liquor and cigarettes. The Liquor Store sells liquor and cigarettes. Brookhaven sells liquor. Speedway sells liquor and cigarettes. So he missed that one, okay? Those are all right there.
Out of the mall.
Okay. And once again, you talked about the security. I'm telling you right now, the security for this alone, from what I've understood, is well over a quarter of a million dollars a year in costs, okay? Nobody under 21 would ever be admitted into that. Nobody. It's impossible. We'd lose the license, okay? We're not going to do that. Why would we risk that? Okay, I want to talk about raising your children. I raise my children here, okay? My children have had problems. They're not, I listen to these parents that say, "My kids are great kids." Every kid's got problems. If those kids want to go out and get marijuana in the street, they'll find it, okay? They'll find it. It's how you raise them, and hopefully you raise them right, which we hopefully did with our children, okay? But they've had their problems. They're not angels by any means. They've both had some problems with marijuana, okay? And hopefully, we've taught them well enough that they go forward and move from that. So I respect every one of you people here. I respect the jobs that you've done, okay? I've known many, many, many mayors, aldermen, throughout the years, for 25 years we lived here. I appreciate everything. I appreciate your consideration. And I want to thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I find it hard to believe that we can teach our kids in schools, say no to drugs. We push that constantly to, on them and then turn around and put it in a dispensary in our town. I think that, you know, we're talking about, oh, it's going to be a fancy boutique. It's, we're selling drugs. That's plain and simple. We're selling drugs. I also really don't care about a timeline to get a license. I think that this whole Q and A thing that went on tonight should have happened before the vote so that people had more information. I don't understand why it didn't. Again, it comes down to communication and being open with your community and getting everybody's input. I have a question for the council. When you vote, do you vote for your constituents and what they want? Or do you have a personal interest in what you're voting for?
I think they'd have to answer that individually, but I think most of us only ran for office because we thought about our constituents. I don't think anybody here has an agenda.
Then I suggest that, I suggest that the next election is going to show how people felt about this. Because- felt about this, because they didn't get to give their feedback. It's something to think about. And I wish that you guys would slow down. There's no rush to pass this.
Just to make mention of this, Alda McKenny mentioned the gambling, the gaming. When the gaming first was legalized by the state of Illinois, we sat back for two years before we made the decision. We opted out several years until we saw what was going on in other communities. I put the opt-out ordinance on the council agenda in September because it was my hope that we would opt out and take a look at this sometime in the future when the state had its act together and where we saw what went on. Council didn't agree with me, and so, you know, we are...
If it hadn't been my 15th birthday that night, I would have been here.
And we have looked at our, Jim, we have looked at our communication vehicles, and we know that we need to improve our communication, and we are looking to do that. So I want you to be aware of that. But everything, I think every email you sent to me, I think I've responded to, so hopefully that counts for something.
Mr. Hyatt.
I'm Steve Hyatt, Darien resident, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. You have approved the selling of marijuana, so the purpose of this meeting was to discuss the location. And the practicality of this location, as well as the reaction to the community, are just two strong things that are working against it. I mean, I go to that mall all the time, and just to try to find a parking spot to pick up my dry cleaning is virtually impossible every time I go. So I hear what you're saying about wanting a place to start right away, but I think you're setting yourselves up for failure. You want to talk about a community backlash in terms of just getting it started. Think about that place being so crowded, you can't even get in there. That's a crazy little intersection coming right up by Popeyes, turn right, left, the stop sign is back on what, it's just a, it's going to be a logistical nightmare. And I think you all will probably agree with that if, and I don't mean any disrespect, but if you walk in and look at, I'm sure you know the town as well as I do. It's just going to be crazy. And I'm not voting for or against. I'm following your vote to say we're going to do it. But then you've also had a lot of people who have showed up here that have at least given you an angle to say, "Well, if you're going to do it, why put it there?" When we did talk about this in planning and zoning, and Alderwoman Sullivan, you mentioned, we did not approve that spot, we talked about a lot of foot traffic from children in that area. And for Lions Club, I've solicited outside that Dunkin' Donuts, and a lot of kids go in there all the time. And to everyone's respect, yes, they can go in a liquor store, they can do these things, but we didn't want that there. That's why we declined that spot. So why not do what's been recommended? If you're going to do it, and I think you're going to want to minimize the backlash in this town, push it out to some of these other sites that were recommended, and if it can't be done in a timeframe the way that you need it, that's a problem. But I think you're going to set yourself up to fail if you do what you're trying to do today.
Thank you, Steve.
Dan? How big is that? How big is the Dunkin' Donuts facility? What's the square footage on that?
About 3,000 square foot of it.
So the average, it's like 3,000 to 5,000 square feet? That's what you should be looking for? Is that...
Included with the travel agency, it would be 4,300 square feet.
Mr. Mayor, one quick thing. I want to say this, I was going to wait till after the vote, but I figured after the vote will, you know, a lot of people get up and leave after that point. I've heard tonight that the city of Darien has tried to, you know, squeeze this in tonight, and we haven't done this through. I became an alderman because I was coming to meetings three years prior to me to be running for office. I got involved with the community. I was coming, I wasn't looking in a newspaper. There's an old statement by John Kennedy, "Don't ask what you can do for your country." Or, "Don't ask what your country could do for you, ask what you can do for your country." I know we're a society that I don't have to, I don't look for a newspaper to find out what the Cubs did the night before. I seek it, I seek it out. I don't look for a newspaper to see what the Blackhawks did, or how many games they've lost. I seek it out. I pay $7,000 a year in property taxes, and I'm probably, just as an average tax bill, as a tax-paying citizen. That's my investment, and I look at what's going on. And for people to come and say that the city of Darien, and we have an open meetings act, every meeting that we, every meeting that we have, every Thursday, our staff puts everything that's going to be on, that's going to be on this sheet, onto the websites, connect, comes up there. So all I'm asking is for people to take a look, take some time, and see what's going on with the city of Darien. The city of Darien has not tried to put this over people, not at all. And I'm one of the ones, you know, has voted no on this. And that's all I have to say on that.
I would just add, I would agree with Joe. The reason we put the opt-out ordinance on in September, and to be quite honest, I thought the opt-out ordinance would be approved, and we wouldn't even be having this discussion tonight. But I also figured that if we put it on in September, and by chance it was voted down, and we opted in, we would have the three months necessary to complete the zoning process before January 1st. And as you can see today, this is December 16th, and we're finally at the point where now where we have a zoning ordinance. There was never any intention of anyone on this council to sneak this through the citizens. By putting it on Direct Connect, by doing the survey, we were at Darien Fest, we had a booth at Darien Fest, and we had a paper ballot where we asked people that were going past that tent to fill out a survey, whether they wanted or they didn't win. And, you know, and you could critique it and say, "I don't read Direct Connect," or "We don't have a newspaper," or "We just didn't know." I understand that. There's a lot of things that go on that we, that a lot of people probably don't know. But Alda McKenny is correct. All of our agendas, all of our minutes, video of all of our meetings are all on our website. You know, if people take the time to go to that website, they can see it. And if there's a good thing that might come out of all of this, is maybe a number of you will now look at those items, look at those sites and say, "The information is there. Maybe I'll look more often at what goes on." Unfortunately, we have social media outlets that put a lot of misinformation out regarding the city, regarding aldermen, regarding any, some of the programs that we propose. The best place to get that information is actually to go to the website and look at this, look at the information. The chief covered crime statistics. That report that you referenced, that's on the website. Any one of you could go there tonight and look at all the detail that any one of these aldermen looked at tonight. It's all there. There's nothing that we hide. All of our meetings, our Economic Development Committee meeting, our Planning and Zoning meeting, our Municipal Services meeting, they're all open to the public. They're all open meetings that people can come to, and they can speak to. And all of those are advertised on our calendar, they're all advertised on our website. And again, people possibly miss some of that. But it is there. And again, we did not try to sneak this by anybody. And that's all I'm going to say. Yes, sir?
Yes, I mean, we're kind of going off the topic, but this is very good because it is at the heart of one of my points. I don't believe that you committed an error of omission. It was an error of omission. Who here doesn't get 100 emails a day? Everybody gets 100 emails, or more. We are flooded with information. The Darien Connect comes out for da-da-da, this date. I pass it by. What's in there 98% of the time? My leaf pickup is going to be a different day because it rained. You know, there's no real incentive for me to go there every time. However, in the past, there've been a few specials. Like when the police send one out, they say, "Burglary in Darien." That gets my attention. That's good communication. Because what do we see when we open up our email? We see the headline. If you sent an email out that said, "We're going to discuss the cannabis ordinance in Darien," as the headline, I guarantee this room would have been packed three times over. But to do it, just say, "Well, this is just another issue about leaf collection." No, no one is really looking at that. And that's just, that's just the nature of communication. That's all I want to say is, if you really want to be more, not open, but more direct, use your common sense. What are the hot-button issues? Highlight those, and that's how you let the community know. That's all.
If I could just respond to that, with using the same communication vehicles that we used to get the word out regarding this, we put out word last year about Sterling Bay in a warehouse, and we had over 100 people in the audience. So obviously, somebody got that message. Two weeks ago, we had a planning and zoning meeting, and that was advertised using the same communication vehicles we have, and we had a room with more people in it that are in it tonight. So obviously, the information got out regarding that. We are going to undertake a change to our communication vehicles. We're going to hire a new social media company, or a new company that's going to possibly, as Mr. Mack says, put things out periodically. Important things, like on a Tuesday, if something comes out, it goes out. So I want to assure you that that's something we are concerned about. Okay? I think we're at the point where if we have maybe one or two more, and then we'll take a vote on the amended amendment to the motion. Thank you.
Hello, I thank you for your time. My name is Erin Savage. I've been a Darien resident for 20 years. My husband and I are raising six kids, six great kids. I will say, my kids are great. They don't, their biggest problem is leaving dirty laundry on the floor. I'm not worried about my kids going into a cannabis shop or having any interest in it. My youngest cried tonight. She's concerned, she's scared. And I don't, I don't get it. I don't get why we're still talking about this if the people that are here tonight and everybody else, there's so many of my friends right now that don't even know this is going on. Will you put this to a referendum? That is my question. Will you? Or is there no backing down? Now we're just moving forward with where are we going to put this crap? And that is what this is. I don't care how much money it brings to Darien. Darien's fine without it. It's better off without it. Yeah, I just, I want that question answered before I sit down. I want to know if you will put this to a referendum, or if there's really no backing down. Oh, we voted four to three. Nobody knew it was happening. Our fault. Why didn't you guys read the emails? We didn't put a better header on it. I'm sorry. We're not going to go, we're not going to try again and ask the Darien residents, who you all represent. I'm sorry, I do have six children, and I'm terribly busy, and I don't come to these meetings, and I don't read emails, and I don't go and look at what you guys are discussing. I don't have the time. But if I did get an email, like he said, that had some kind of, "Hey, cannabis, come into Darien," boom, I would have been here. So I want, I want that question answered. Will this go to a referendum? Is it a possibility for you to reconsider this? Or are you just literally going to decide whether it goes to the center of town or the outskirts of town? I don't want the riffraff that's going to come with this. My kids, four tires on my kid's car were slashed a couple weeks ago. No explanation, just random. I don't want more random. I don't need more random. It was a random act. I'm confident of that. It's unfortunate. But I want to know, are we going to rethink this? Because I think it needs to be rethink, rethought.
Ryan, tell me if I'm wrong, but one of the four members who originally voted the opt-out ordinance down would have to ask that this be reconsidered again?
Well, I mean, if the council wanted to go back to opt-out, I mean, there's an ordinance tonight that if it fails, there's no zoning available. I mean, there's a number of ways. I don't know that a referendum solves issues. You get 20% voter turnout, that doesn't, that doesn't mandate...
I think you'd get more than that for this.
I'm sorry?
I think you'd get more than that for this kind of a topic.
Well, again, my point is, there's no perfect system. I think, and not to speak for you all, and they can speak for themselves, but they weigh a lot of things. They weigh people commenting on them, but that's not the only thing they weigh when they're making a decision. But Mayor, to your point, there's, I mean, the council would have to decide if they want to revisit the opt-out ordinance. For tonight, there's a matter of the zoning on. They've had those discussions. You would need to ask the aldermen if any of them are interested in changing the position now and opting out. But the best way to tell is you have an ordinance tonight. If that ordinance gets approved, there's an amendment in the ordinance. If that gets approved, the aldermen are not interested in revisiting this. It's, that's, the vote is up for tonight, which will tell that, will answer your question.
Hello, everyone. My name is Hilda Gonzalez, and I serve on the zoning and planning commission. And I just want you all to know that when we were voting on what areas would be appropriate for a possible cannabis location dispensary, we were already told that all of you councilmen voted for a cannabis business. So I reached out to my alderman, Mr. Vaughn, left a message for you today, letting you know that I was against voting for the location that you guys are discussing, that it should be approved. I'm totally against it. Now, as a zoning and planning commissioner, if we already selected some of the areas that are outside of the Hinsbrook location, why are you now having this meeting, this conversation, that the Hinsbrook location is the most appropriate place for a business, for cannabis dispensary? We were overturned as far as our decisions. I don't know if all of you voted on it, or if one person voted on it, but I just feel that the zoning and planning commission is not getting the respect that we deserve when we say a place is not appropriate to be zoned for this type of business. That's all I need to say.
Mr. Mallers?
Okay, I've sat back here and been quiet. I'm the chairman of the planning and zoning. We had the meeting back in September. We made a decision not to have it at Brookhaven. For whatever reason, municipal services changed that and said, "Yes, that's where we want to have it." I don't understand why. I don't think it makes a lot of sense, but I hope that you listen to what these people have said tonight. They don't want it there in the conversation.
Hello, my name's Matt Zalkowski. Born and raised here in Darien, Hinsdale South alum. I too am applying for a cannabis dispensary and would love to place it here in Darien. It's very clear that Brookhaven Plaza is not the place. Happy about that. I will say, it is one of the few places that we've been able to find someone willing to work with us with regard to the 10 pins or parcel identification numbers you've selected. Route 83 I heard a lot about, most of that's Willowbrook. I think there's two small strip centers that wouldn't be suitable for size or no vacancies. 75th and Lamont, sounds like a good spot. So my really only question is to, you know, so we can apply, it's much easier to have a location, it's much more likely we're going to be successful if we have a location. I think they were right. If one of us who are from here don't win, it's unlikely Darien will get a dispensary for all those who are worried about it. So with that said, right now, outside of Brookhaven Plaza, there's really no option. So I'd love for recommendations on a new location such as 75th and Lamont or somewhere else. And also, if we were willing to do a greenfield development, meaning ground up, would you be open to a, you know, new planning commission meeting or for that kind of new location if we're on the outskirts of towns near one of the other approved pins? So like the strip center on Route 83, there was an ability to add a building next to one of those, but technically, that would be a different parcel number? Would that be something we could consider down the line? Thank you.
Just to clarify, on the ordinance, this, it has certain, the proposed ordinance has certain properties that are recommended as permitted uses, certain that are prohibited. But the third category is all other non-residential parcels, which that, all that means is that would require a special use process. So if the parcels aren't on the list of acceptable sites, and they're not on the list of prohibitive sites, they are acceptable subject to a public hearing and a special use permit, which would be another meeting before the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately the city council. But there, the available sites based on the proposed ordinance is actually, is actually pretty large, just subject to the special use requirements.
Thank you.
And I think what people need to understand is, the reason we're talking about Brookhaven as much is because we have a motion to amend the zoning ordinance to take Brookhaven off. No one here said... No one here said we only wanted it at Brookhaven. We have a lot of sites that are available and some are on the outskirts of town. And so, Hilda, we're not saying we want it in Brookhaven. We're just saying that's one of the sites and Alderwoman Sullivan is saying she's very much against that because it is the center of town. I just want you to clarify that. Mary?
I mean, I'm, once again, I'm against it anywhere in Darien, okay? But I'm dealing with the fact that the city council approved the one dispensary license. So unless there's a councilman, or I'm the only woman, willing to change their initial vote, then we're dealing with the cards we've been dealt. And so if one dispensary license is going to be issued, then now's our chance to have an impact on where that goes. And Brookhaven obviously sounded an alarm. I served on the Planning and Zoning Committee before I attended that meeting. And the fact that one of the people applying for a license has a letter of intent, so the likelihood of nothing being changed, if they get a license, it's going in Brookhaven. So now's our chance to change it. But I'd like for, to call on Mayor Joe Marquez to maybe ask the aldermen if anyone is willing to change their mind tonight or wants to propose putting it on a referendum.
Well, I want to answer another question first. You know, we addressed Brookhaven Shopping Center. John Manos is a very good businessman to deal with. Next to the Evolve Workout World, which used to be the 24/7, there is a new bakery slash pierogi shop that's going in there. Around the corner, next to the American Brokers and neck on the other side of Dottie's, we're bringing a brand new hot dog shop. John is constantly shopping and trying to fill that center. So I went in and I talked to most of those business owners and they really have no significant complaint regarding dealing with John Manos as a businessman. And John does work hard to try to fill, he tries to get regionals and large nationals in there because they're more secure. So that's my answer to that question. But I think tonight we have, we have a motion and a second to amend the zoning ordinance as proposed. And that motion is to remove Brookhaven as a permitted use, to basically make it a prohibited use. So what I would like to do is I'd like to have a vote on now. I'm going to call the question and have the alderman respond to that.
First, we have to vote on the amendment and then we have to vote on the original ordinance that was presented. So we'll do the amendment first. It was motioned by Alderman Sullivan and seconded by Alderman Shower. On the amendment, Sullivan, and this is to remove Brookhaven Plaza where it says existing Walgreens and also 1220 Plainfield Road, items number two and three that are on the original ordinance.
So I'm only voting on my amendment. I am not voting on the entire ordinance amended.
Correct.
You're voting, and if you vote aye, that means you want to remove it.
I want, yes, aye.
Yes, this is to be removed. The two items are to be removed, item number two and number three.
Aye.
Sullivan, okay. Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
This is a tough one, but based on the feedback tonight and some of the constituents that contacted me earlier today and just based on that feedback, I would have to vote aye to remove it.
Belzak?
Nay.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
No.
Kenny?
Aye.
Five ayes to remove, items number two and three for location and two nays. Now, on the original ordinance as presented, Belzak was the motion and the second was done by Vaughn.
Now, is this the amended?
We just did the amendment.
But I mean, this is the amended ordinance.
We did the amendment first and then you go back to the original ordinance and the amendment will...
Minus, as amended, minus those two.
So it's the original ordinance amended.
As amended.
Yes.
So basically, if you're...
On every other...
We've done the amendment first, which is what we have to do. You go backwards and then you're voting on the original ordinance as amended. So Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Nay.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Shower?
No.
Kenny?
No.
I have four ayes and three nays.
Okay, so the ordinance, the ordinance as amended passes.
Correct.
Now, if the council wants to come back and revisit this, I agree with City Administrator Vanna. I think that the council at any point could call this up as an issue again. I think, as Ann explained to me when she came to the office several months ago, even with a zoning ordinance in place, the likelihood of something even happening in Darien is very remote. So it may not happen at all. I think we're protected by having an ordinance. At least we know where the available sites are at. And I think that in the future, when a business does decide to go to a certain location and we have a planning and zoning hearing on that, we'll get the word out so people have an opportunity to respond to that as well. So with that, I go to questions, comments, and announcements from the aldermen. I would like to...
Can I make up just a... I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year since we won't be convening until next year. And I appreciate the audience having so much to say tonight and the respectful nature that they had for one another and for your elected officials. Thank you for participating in this discussion tonight.
I would like to, as many of you know, we had a gala on Friday night celebrating Darien's 50th birthday. It was attended by over 300 people at Carriage Greens. The committee that put this together, Bonnie Cussera, Linda Barovia, Carol Mallers, Merrill Salazar, Jim Gessinger, among others, did a fabulous job. Those of you who couldn't make it, we are going to put several of the historical elements on our Channel 6 as well as our Darien Direct Connect. There was a then and now slideshow. There was a nine-minute video that spoke to the history of Darien. We're going to put that out there for people who want to see that. It was a wonderful evening. Darien's now 50, maybe we're getting a little bit brighter with our age. I don't know. But I want to thank the committee for all their hard work. They did do a yeoman's job at planning it and I think they should all be congratulated for that. And I just wanted to add that. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience have any comment they want to make?
I just want to thank everyone for their time.
I want to urge those of you that voted to opt-in for this to please, please mull it over and reconsider.
Can I have a motion to adjourn? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderwoman Sullivan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, folks, for your attendance tonight.